Good evening and welcome to the July 24th, 2018 San Bruno City Council meeting. Calling this meeting to order, we want to thank the Garden Club for providing the floral arrangements that they do for each meeting. Melissa, can I have a roll call, please?
Sure. Councilmember Medina?
Here.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Here.
Councilmember Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Davis?
Here.
Mayor Medina?
Here. May I please ask Connie Jackson to lead us in the pledge this evening?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, under announcements, we have several announcements. First and foremost, we have speaker cards. They happen to be green tonight. What they are is our new speaker cards. So what they are is for, again, if you're going to speak on an item, please see the city clerk, or they're at the table as you walk in, and that will be filled out, and that's how you will be called. You'll be called by the city clerk to come up and speak at the podium. That's how we're going to know how many folks are wishing to speak on an item. What also is different this time is on this card, you can also check the box that would allow you to receive via email the agendas in future. If you don't want it, you just don't have to. But at least it gives you that opportunity, that option, to just know what's going on, stay connected, and be informed. So let's go on to some of the other announcements we have. Number one is the regular city council meeting of August the 14th, 2018 is canceled. The only regularly city council meeting in August will be held on August the 28th, 2018. Next item, the Beautification Task Force is accepting nominations for the annual beautification awards program. Applications can be found on the website as well as in the city clerk's office. The deadline is Friday, August 17th at 5:00. Are there anything else to add?
Just, we made it a little easier for you this time, so if you open the city's website on the right-hand side, you'll see it under "What's Happening." You just push that link, and it'll take you right to the nomination papers. Thank you.
Next item, the City of San Bruno will host National Night Out on Tuesday, August the 7th from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Grundy Park is where it will begin. Please visit the city website for more information. Also, very important item, the City of San Bruno will host an opportunity for residents in the Bel Air neighborhoods to meet FEMA representatives to learn more about the flood insurance requirements for properties in the new flood hazard zone. The community meetings will be held on August, it's the 27th, it says the 22nd, it's the 27th, from 6:00 to 8:00, and that will be at Bel Air Elementary. Notices have been sent to the affected residents as of the meeting location, and again, it's going to be sent out to about 400-plus residents in the affected area, and a follow-up will be sent as well. And Bel Air was chosen because obviously it's close to that neighborhood, that community, to make it convenient for the residents. Last item under announcements, for those of you that may know, our city manager, Connie Jackson, this is her last city council meeting with the city as she retires after 40 years of service to the two communities, as well as almost 15 years here in the City of San Bruno. And tonight, what I do have is Mayor Franzella could not be here, but he sent me this to read. Dear Connie, wow, it is amazing that 15 years can pass so fast. Since I was there for your first meeting, I certainly wanted to be there in person for your last meeting tonight. However, a last-minute appointment prohibits me from being there. I just wanted to personally thank you for your years of service and dedication to the City of San Bruno and acknowledge all that you have accomplished in that time. I wish you happiness, contentment, and fulfillment in your retirement, and of course, lots of quality time in the role of grandmother with the darling twins. Larry Franzella, former mayor. Also, at this time, you may not see him because there's a lot of people here, but former Mayor Jim Ruane is here with us. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Rico, and council members. It's a little different speaking from this side, but we'll get through it. So, good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak early on this agenda. I am Jim Ruane, the former very proud mayor of the wonderful city of San Bruno. I wanted to take this opportunity to recognize and congratulate our outgoing city manager, Connie Jackson, on her retirement and on the occasion of her last city council meeting. I first met Connie a little over 14 years ago when we interviewed to hire a new city manager. The recruitment and hiring of a city manager is a weighty undertaking. Looking for someone who has the personality, the experience, and the intelligence to run a city the size of San Bruno is no easy task. Connie stepped right in and has thoughtfully guided us in the right direction all of that time since. Her thoughtful approach to many important issues ranging from employee negotiations to development to some very knowledgeable advice on numerous other issues have proven to be a deciding factor in San Bruno's respect in this county and the solid foundation which we now enjoy. Through her guidance, we were able to sustain through a terrible recessional crisis without the loss of employees. This is what management is all about, the partnership of policymakers and those whose duties are to carry out those policies. Then on September 10th, September 9th, 2010, our world changed forever. Not only was Connie managing this city, but was thrown into an entirely new, unexpected, and very challenging endeavor. I wanted to share with you some things you might not have known. We made a number of trips to Washington, D.C. I made four, and I know Connie made at least two more, to address the U.S. Senate Subcommittee on Transportation and Infrastructure and to attend the NTSB hearings. We made a trip to Sacramento to address a joint senate and assembly committee, bringing them up-to-date on our experience and our progress. We traveled to New Orleans to address the Pipeline Safety Trust Convention. We traveled to Denver to address the National Association of Registered Utility Commissioners. We traveled to New York City to address Bloomberg, The Wall Street Journal, and 60 Minutes. And we traveled to Philadelphia where we addressed the first gathering of the U.S. Conference of Mayor's Council on Pipeline Safety. In addition, we had meetings with editorial staff from papers including The Chronicle, Senazay Mercury News, and The Sacramento Bee, along with press conferences and attendance at the State Public Utilities Commission meetings, too numerous to mention. All of this led to successful outcomes in our efforts to rebuild and succeed in our efforts to receive restitution. I have always said that something good has to come out of the tragedy we all experienced, and Connie was and is an integral part of that goodness. I tell you all of this because during all of this time, Connie was still managing, with the help of her competent staff, the daily operation of the City of San Bruno. And looking back, we made an exceptional choice, and I made a lifelong friend. Connie, thank you.
Appreciate it. Connie, do you want to adjourn the meeting now, or do you want to keep going? I'm just teasing, I'm teasing. No, no. We know that there's a lot of folks here, so we're going to continue on in the meeting, but I want to thank Mayor Franzella and Mayor Ruane for your comments and for acknowledging the city manager that you've worked closely with. So, thank you, Jim. Presentation. We also have something exciting. We have three new persons that are being appointed to our volunteer, yes, volunteer, committee commissioners and boards who meet regularly, listen to the residents, give us recommendations and thoughts. And Melissa, if you would, please.
At this time, I'd like to ask to the podium Tricia Howard, Scott Thomas, and Matthew Gaines. Come a little closer. I don't bite, I don't bite. If you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye?
Aye.
Tricia Howard?
Scott Thomas?
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies?
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic?
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully?
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter?
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
And then, very quickly, to, on behalf of the council, to Tricia, Scott, and Matt, who are in bike and ped, traffic and safety, community preparedness, we want to thank you for stepping forward. There were a lot of great applicants that came forward who wanted to participate, be involved. You know, anybody can go to the meetings, and so everybody's welcome, and if anybody else wants to fill in an application, our city clerk would be more than happy, but we want to thank you for stepping forward, thank you for being here this evening, and good luck as you serve the community in your prospective roles. So, thank you and congratulations. All right, we're going to move on to consent.
Items on the consent calendar are considered routine or implement an earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested.
Any action on the consent?
Move to approve.
Motion?
Second.
Motion and second, move to approve of consent. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As have it. We'll move on to the next item, public hearing.
Item 6A, receive staff reports and presentations regarding an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to approve a conditional use permit, UP 17-025, for installation of a new wireless antenna on an existing utility pole located at 123 Elm Avenue, and continue the matter for deliberation and decision.
Okay, before we begin, again, I want to remind the audience of the speaker cards. That's how, on this item, you'll be called out and up, and we're going to see how many we have, and on the time element, how much each speaker will receive, once I hear from the city clerk a little bit later. Just so we have the same expectations, what we have is we have an appellant who's going to have a lot of time, we have the applicant who's going to have a lot of time. Questions come from council. We're also going to have speakers. Our expectation would be that when a speaker is speaking, they have all the respect and the quiet and the dignity to be able to feel comfortable and confident to have what he or she feels is important for us to hear. So during that time, and when they concluded, I'm asking for no applause. Please don't disrupt the process, no commentary from the audience because you may or may not concur with something that was said or a fact that you may believe to not be factual. And I think as long as we go through this process, and we all have the courtesy and respect that this community has, we will get to hear a lot of good information this evening. So with that, turn it over to the first, which will be a staff report presentation. Staff will provide an oral report that refers to the written staff report and exhibits.
Mr. Mayor and council members, I'll be delivering the report tonight. My name is David Woulterain. I'm the Community Development Director for the City of San Bruno. This item is an appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of a use permit.
Can you speak louder, please?
This item is an appeal of the Planning Commission's appeal, I'm sorry, Planning Commission's approval of a use permit proposing to install one canister wireless antenna on an existing 38-foot, 6-inch-high utility pole located in a low-density residential district. The subject location of the proposed installation is 123 Elm Avenue. On slide behind me is the existing pole location as well as the proposed installation of the canister atop the pole. The proposed wireless antenna would be located on a 7-foot-high extension to the pole, which would measure about 4 feet, and it's 14.6 inches in width. With the extension, the total height of the installation would be 49 feet, 10 inches, below the allowable 50-foot height limit in this location per Section 12.84.160 of the San Bruno Municipal Code. On November 3rd, 2017, the CBR Group and Verizon Wireless, the applicants, submitted a conditional use permit application for the installation of this wireless telecommunications facility at the subject location. They did this in accordance with our municipal code, Section 12.220.040. On June 19th, 2018, the Planning Commission formally considered this application at a duly-nosed public hearing. After considering the applicant's presentation and considerable public comment, and following lengthy discussion of the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission voted to approve the conditional use permit to allow the installation of this wireless facility at 123 Elm Avenue. On June 28th, 2018, Ms. Leslie Emle, who owns property at 149 Acacia Avenue, appealed the Planning Commission's approval of this conditional use permit, contending that the approval should be overturned based on the project's aesthetics, concerns about notification, lack of certain study reports, questions about a gap coverage analysis, and various ordinance, zoning, and land use implications. The appellant's statement argues that the 50-foot, approximate 50-foot structure is not appropriate in front of single-family homes. On July 12th, 2018, staff sent notices of this city council meeting, this hearing regarding the appeal, to all addresses within a 600-foot radius of the proposed installation. This public hearing was also noticed in the local newspaper. On July 17th, 2018, the applicant, Verizon, submitted to the city a six-page response to the appeal, including various exhibits. This information was received after the formal noticing. That information from Verizon supplemented information previously provided to the Planning Commission, which included a site plan and diagrams of the facility being proposed, site location and photo simulations of the facility, depiction of a gap analysis, and their alternative site analysis, as well as an RF, a radio frequency, analysis. And then on July 19th, 2018, the appellant, Ms. Emle, submitted additional information in support of her appeal. And during this timeframe, we, the staff, received additional emails from various residents regarding this proposed application. Those emails are attached to the staff report as Attachment 11. Given the late information that came in after the noticing from the applicant, the appellant, and the number of emails received, staff has not had sufficient time to review and evaluate this new information, nor had the appellant or applicant received each other's recent submissions, as I described, until posted in this staff report. Accordingly, staff is recommending that the city council receive this written information, which we provided to you in your packet, allow 10-minute oral presentations from the appellant and the applicant, take public comment, ask clarifying questions, clarifying questions of staff or the presenters as appropriate, close the public hearing, and continue the matter for deliberation and decision at a date certain in the future. Staff also recommends that the city council establish a deadline for one additional written submission from the applicant in reply to the appellant's new information, and for the appellant in reply to the applicant's new information. Staff is recommending that the appellant and the applicant be given two weeks to prepare their submittals to staff. We're recommending to the city council that the due date for those submittals be August 7th, 2018. Staff will receive, review, and complete needed research of this information, then staff proposes to prepare a thorough written report to council on this matter. Staff recommends that the continued date for the city council deliberation and decision on this matter be a date certain, and we're recommending September 25th, 2018, to provide sufficient time for analysis and report preparation. Naturally, that meeting would be publicly noticed, as was this meeting. When the matter returns to the city council with benefit of this additional information and staff analysis for your deliberation and decision, the city council will consider whether there is substantial evidence in the record to make the following findings. And these findings that I'll describe are based on state and federal law, as well as the city's wireless telecommunications facilities ordinance in Chapter 12.220 of the San Bruno Municipal Code. The findings are as follows. The location, size, and intensity of the proposed operation will not create a hazardous or inconvenient vehicular or pedestrian traffic pattern, taking into account the proposed use as compared with the general character and intensity of the neighborhood. The next finding. The proposed development as set forth on the plans will not unreasonably restrict or interfere with light and air on the property and on other property in the neighborhood, will not hinder or discourage the appropriate development and use of land and buildings in the neighborhood, or impair the value thereof and is consistent with the design and scale of the neighborhood. Third finding. The improvement of the structure as shown on the elevations as submitted is not detrimental to the character or value of an adjacent residential district. Next finding. The general appearance of the proposed building, structure, or grounds will be in keeping with the character of the neighborhood and will not be detrimental to the orderly and harmonious development of the city, and will not impair the desirability of investment or occupation in the neighborhood. Next finding. The proposed development is consistent with the San Bruno general plan. And the last finding. The proposal will not, under the circumstances of the particular case, be detrimental to the health, safety, morals, comfort, and general welfare of persons residing or working in the neighborhood of the proposed use. In terms of direct fiscal impact to the city, staff does not anticipate that the proposed use will have a direct fiscal impact. The city does not receive any revenue for installation of telecommunications facilities on private utility poles located in the public right-of-way. Again, in summary, the staff recommendation is this. Receive the staff report and presentations regarding the appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to approve a conditional use permit for installation of a new wireless antenna on an existing utility pole at 123 Elm Avenue. Receive all public comment. Ask clarifying questions of the presenters as needed and appropriate. Close the public hearing, then continue the matter to a date certain. We're recommending September 25th, 2018, with the understanding that both the appellant, Ms. Emle, and the applicant, Verizon, will need to submit their replies to each other's described new information to staff by August 7th, 2018. That concludes staff's report. Thank you.
Thank you. Just for those that came in during the presentation, we have speaker cards. If you're going to speak on this item, a card needs to be filled out with the city clerk prior so that we know how many speakers we're going to have. Those are who we're going to call and understand, and so, once we have these submitted, this is kind of like it, like, you know, if you're going to buy your big old card or what have you, this is it, let's get it in, so that we kind of know, and we know what we have, we can kind of flow the line, just so that I know people have to get home and have other things to do. And then, again, the last reminder that I did have to folks who came in late was just about no applauding at the end, being respectful and courteous to every speaker, and allowing them to say his or her piece, with no interruptions or comments from the audience. So, to council, questions from council members to staff. All right, then we're going to move on to number three, the appellant's oral presentation. The appellant would come forward, please. And the appellant may provide documentary evidence for the city council's review, and may ask witnesses to provide oral testimony, but it's within the 10 minutes. So 10 minutes will count once you begin, and that will be all-encompassing. And again, if everyone can please give the courtesy and kindness to our speakers.
Before I begin, may I ask a point of order? I'd request an additional 10 minutes for this presentation?
No, sir.
Another point of order. Has San Bruno negotiated with Verizon on the shot clock?
City attorney?
Sure, I'll be happy to respond to that. That inquiry is not relevant to the appeal hearing that is before the city council, so it's not a relevant fact or one of the findings that the city council needs to make.
Did that start my 10 minutes?
Well, if you're going to keep going, then yes, because I know both sides have been trying to work together through this, so if there's going to be more of what you're asking, then the answer's going to be yes.
No, that was a point of order. That's normally not included in the amount of time.
Sir? Are you beginning the presentation, or do you have more point of order?
I will do so now.
Okay, thank you.
The Brown Act, the Sunshine Law, states, "The people of this state do not yield their sovereignty to the agencies which serve them. The people and delegated authority do not give their public servants the right to decide what is good for the people to know and what is not good for them to know. The people insist on remaining informed so that they may retain control over the instruments they have created." The council has, not this council, but the Planning Commission has exercised illegal use of restrictive speech. The Planning Commission informed San Bruno citizens that they would not be heard on the Angus Permit because they did not live close enough to the permit. That's illegal, under Government Code 54954.3, which states, "The public may comment on agenda items before or during consideration by a legislative body." Local agencies do not have any ability to regulate the content of that communication. The Planning Commission should be so instructed. This request by Verizon should be denied. It conflicts with San Bruno Municipal Code 12.220 at SEEC. That section controls the application. It must be followed, and it requires this application be denied. Cell sites should be located only in industrial or commercial areas. San Bruno Municipal Code 12220.010 says, "Section 704 of the Telecommunications Act of 1996 preserves the authority of local agencies to regulate telecommunications facilities based on the aesthetics, visual impacts, and land use impacts." San Bruno Code 12220.020 echoes that. The most important statute is 12.220.050, which states, quote, "One, zoning. Telecommunication facilities shall be located in areas zoned either industrial or commercial. If a telecommunications provider wishes to locate telecommunications facilities in a residential zoned area, the provider must demonstrate to the city that no other feasible non-residential location is available that would meet a gap in service or other legitimate business needs." This application must be denied because it cannot be located in the residential area. There is no gap in Verizon's coverage, and Verizon has failed to prove there are no feasible non-residential locations of feasible non-residential locations available. It has failed to examine co-location facilities or other alternatives. It has not submitted an appropriate application under 12220.070, which requires a full and complete application. This is a single application, which is not Verizon's plan. This is a stealth operation where Verizon is playing hide the ball by submitting a single application when it expects at least nine or 20 cell sites. It may expect dozens or potentially hundreds in our town, depending upon coverage. These are sites that cover approximately a radius of 500 feet, and it will need to kite them together. Yet, it has taken advantage of the fact that the planning commission and code only requires notification to the immediate 300 feet immediately affected. This is a matter of extreme public importance to our community. I strongly recommend that the city council adopt an emergency measure and amend this law so that we have notification on a citywide basis of elements of industrial intrusion into our neighborhoods. To these people I've spoken with, they have uniformly said they had no idea that a cell site tower, location, or web of cell sites was coming, and that's because of this 300-foot notification, which is woefully insufficient. In a residential neighborhood, an R1 neighborhood, it would be preposterous for any neighbor to attempt to build up to 50 feet. There is no reason why this town should allow a telephone pole with what I consider to be a dangerous cell tower on top of it to reach nearly 50 feet. Verizon must be required to submit an entire plan, not for a single tower, but for all it intends in San Bruno. A single tower, we know, is useless. The recommendation by the planning commission is not legally sufficient because it is not substantiated with substantial evidence as required by the San Bruno Code. We expect our city council to base its decisions on grounds that are legally supportable, such as the danger of a fire hazard, an insufficient plan submitted by Verizon, or a decrease in property values based on concerns about fire, earthquake, and wind. There are no reports submitted by Verizon showing that adding nearly 20 feet to a 30-foot utility pole does not stand to fail in the seven or eight-degree magnitude earthquake that our Bay Area is overdue for. There are no peer-reviewed engineering studies that show that this application is safe. There is similarly no consideration given to the fire danger that a cell tower presents. We know from the recent examples of the Sonoma County Fire, the Sulfur Fire, and the Malibu Fire, that PG&E poles are overburdened by telecommunications equipment. They fail, and they cause massive fires. Lives have been lost, property destroyed, fines levied, and damages have exceeded millions of dollars. Why would San Bruno not wake up to that reality? There are strenuous winds in San Bruno. There is no peer review or any consideration in Verizon's submittal that shows that their towers will not be susceptible to toppling over. This city has already been through a catastrophic event with PG&E's pipeline explosion that claimed the lives of eight of our residents. As a community, we mourn them. We have a sculpture to them outside our rec center. How could we let another disaster happen by allowing Verizon to come into our residential neighborhoods with these cell towers? To Verizon, I think you should be ashamed of your corporate behavior. You are trying to sneak these cells into our residences so that you can save money over installing appropriate cell towers in appropriate locations. This is a public relations blunder waiting to become a fiasco. We request that the city deny the permit of application, grant our appeal. It's the law. It's what's right for San Bruno, and good conscience requires this result.
I provided extensive information to this council in advance of this meeting, which shows the impact of the 4G, 5G tower design on people's health, the environment, and the aesthetics of this neighborhood. The radiation, the R, the radio radiation small cell antennas are going not only to be 50 feet in height, they're going to be atop of PG&E poles with wind-driven cooling fans. They'll produce noises. We have electrical supporting equipment mounted seven feet above our narrow sidewalks. These installations pose a significant danger to health, public safety, and the beauty of our community. Please have these towers placed safely outside our neighborhoods. We have cities of San, of Burlingame, Hillsborough, Monterey, and Burbank, their city councils have voted no to allow Verizon to install the 4G and 5G towers in their neighborhoods. Why should San Bruno take a different course of action? We've got to stop this. If there are these severe winds that we have every winter and on our afternoons, we've got hurricane-force winds, and if one of these comes down, we're gonna have a fire, the potential of a fire, just like they had in Malibu Canyon, when a similar type of apparatus came down, sparked the fire, and took that canyon out. I thank you for allowing us to be here this evening and present this. I think you'll take, I hope you take all this into consideration.
I'll supplement on that time, if I may. I would point-
You're interrupting his time.
I'm sorry? Thank you. I want to point the public and the city council to page 77 of the 220-page packet that comprises this submission. I believe there are dangerously high levels indicated in that page of the report. This is a tower that's gonna operate at 50 feet, and what that page indicates is that at the 10-foot level, a person can stand in that area for a total of six minutes before they receive a dose of radiation that is declared to be unhealthy by the federal standards. Well, what's gonna happen on the second floor, where people are sleeping? We know cell phones are wonderful, but they're dangerous. At least you can take a cellphone away from your ear. You cannot move away from a tower that is placed outside your bedroom window. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, questions from council?
I would just like clarification. I heard the person say they were adding 20 feet, but my understanding was it was four feet on top of the pole?
I don't know the exact numbers. I believe the pole's 33 feet, and there's a height restriction in San Bruno that says it shall not be more than 50. Verizon brings it up to 49-something, like 49, 10 inches. So, they add something, and then the antenna, which gets it to 49, and I think 10 inches.
Okay. Yeah. I'm just, I would caution people to be careful of what they say, because that's not adding 20 feet. If it's already 38, adding 20 feet makes it 58, so...
I'm gonna hold my questions until after all the presentations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Coming back to the podium. Sorry, I shouldn't have had you sit down and then have you go back. So now, we have the applicant's oral presentation, which is 10 minutes. The applicant may provide documentary evidence for the city council's review, and may ask witnesses to provide oral testimony as part of this 10 minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Mark Peters. I'm with the CBR Group. We are the applicant and agent for Verizon Wireless on our proposal. We are proposing to add a four-foot pole top-mounted canister antenna on top of a wood safety extension that's six feet, for an overall height increase of 11 feet. There are two remote radio units mounted on a standoff bracket that's mounted to the pole. We have an electric meter and electrical safety disconnect that are also mounted on the standoff bracket. There's some associated cabling, and then there's what we're proposing, a solar shield or sunscreen to cover the cabling, to improve the aesthetics of the facility. All the equipment will be painted brown to blend in with the pole. The height of the existing pole is 38 feet, and our overall extension will be below the 50-foot maximum. And I apologize if I'm a little bit redundant to the excellent report by staff and presentation earlier. We started this process February of 2017 internally, where we looked at sites in the area. Through that process, we chose what we felt was the best location within our coverage objective. We created engineering drawings. By October, we made a submittal to the city in November of last year. We met with city staff in May of 2018 to review our proposal onsite, and we, at that time, actually removed components of the design to help improve its aesthetics and improve its integration, you know, with the character of the neighborhood. The city of San Bruno noticed, thank you, the city of San Bruno noticed the 300-foot, within a 300-foot radius, based on your ordinance, for the public hearing that we have with the planning commission. In the interim of that time, we met with residents onsite to answer their questions as best we could and discuss design. As we have removed many of the components of the, of the cell site that we could, meaning the battery backup unit, which was a ground-mounted cabinet, we removed, and we came to a two-radio design, we've slimmed the site down to the smallest aesthetic footprint that we can. On June 19th, we presented to the planning commission and were approved, and there's not enough time available in this forum to discuss everything we talked about with the planning commission, but there are a few brief points that we talked about at length. I apologize, my notes are out of order. We discussed the safety of the facility, both the structural components, which were mentioned by the appellant tonight, at length, and the electoral review. The city of San Bruno has a building department and a public works department that does peer review on things like structural capacity. We also discussed the other regulations that we are required to comply with, California Public Utilities Commission, General Order 95 regulations, as well as environmental regulations that are federal and state requirements. We talked fairly extensively about the aesthetics and the smallest design that we could refine the site to was what we utilized, and the addition of other components, the solar shields to improve the aesthetics. We also discussed at length alternative sites to this one, within our coverage objective. We had approximately 25 structures above ground. This would be wood utility poles, light poles that are available to, for Verizon to potentially side on. 19 of these were of no significance or meaningful difference to our proposed facility, and I can explain that later, if you like, in greater detail. Five had GEO 95, Rule 94 climbing space restrictions that made them unusable for us, and one had PG&E safety fuses on the pole, which made it unavailable to us. One of the alternatives that we did not discuss was that if there are no viable alternatives that, an additional alternative, or there are no viable or better alternatives to the pole that we selected and have proposed, would be to install a new pole within the public right-of-way, which was discouraged by the city. I would like to, we have an example of the SunShield that was mocked up in Palo Alto, and I'm sorry, I don't have better pictures, but that's the only one. And then, I would also like to introduce other people we have on our team who are going to speak. Mr. Paul Albritton, outside counsel for Verizon.
Good evening, Mayor Medina, members of the council, Paul Albritton, outside counsel for Verizon Wireless. Thanks for your time this evening. Verizon Wireless is coming to San Bruno to provide a small cell network in order to meet capacity demand for Verizon Wireless's network. Our capacity demand is doubling almost every year, and nearly 52% of households don't have a wireline phone anymore, and this is the demand we're trying to meet with these very small facilities, close to the end user, low-waterage facilities. It's the new topography. Dwayne Bonham is here, the RF engineer who designed this network, and he can answer your questions about that network. I want to explain that Verizon Wireless is a telephone corporation, and so, under California Public Utility Code, Section 7901, as a telephone corporation, we're allowed to put telephone equipment on telephone poles in the public roads and highways of the state of California. And your role with our rights to put places, put facilities in the right-of-way is to determine the aesthetics and the extent to those, that those facilities may incommode public access to those facilities. So, issues regarding gap really are not any of the findings that you heard from the planning director, nor are they relevant with respect to the telephone corporation's right to put facilities in the right-of-way. You do have quite a bit of authority, though, with respect to aesthetics, and so, in that regard, Verizon Wireless does everything it can to minimize the aesthetic impact of these facilities. To begin with, we use existing poles, existing vertical infrastructure, instead of trying to put in new infrastructure. In this case, we designed the network to have the minimum number of poles, and then, within the area, the search area for this pole, we looked at 25 different vertical structures to try and determine the one that had the least impact, and there's an alternatives analysis in your packet that reflects that. Then, we looked at design. We actually came in with a design with three radios, a battery backup unit mounted on the ground, and we, in working with the staff, eliminated a radio, eliminated the battery backup unit. There are no moving parts, no noise from this facility. It's designed to have a slender antenna that matches the verticality of the utility pole. The radios are designed to be narrowed and placed on the utility pole so that, in the end, it will look like a telephone pole with telephone equipment in it, and we think that the references to aesthetics and the appeal are just, are overstated. I want to briefly talk about safety. The, there has been great concern by the appellant regarding the safety of these poles falling over. There are really three checks on that. First, CBR Group does a structural and analysis to determine whether they think the PG&E pole needs to be replaced. Second, PG&E does an analysis, and they determine whether the pole needs to be replaced or can handle the equipment that we're going to be putting on it. And PG&E, we have to pay for the replacement pole, so if PG&E has any incentive at all, they tell us to replace the pole, but they look at it. Finally, your conditions of approval, number four, number 10, require that your building department issue a building permit for us, to us, and so, they also will be looking at the structural analysis. We have three checks to determine and confirm that this facility will meet all wind loads and seismic requirements. Finally, on health, there's the radio frequency emissions. I want to turn the microphone over to Dr. Gerald Bushberg. He is a medical physicist from Davis, recently retired as an associate professor of oncology. I want to say that we submitted a report, the EBI report, that showed that we comply. You commissioned a third-party report from Hammond-Nedison to confirm that we comply, and once we comply with FCC guidelines, then it's really sort of off the table in terms of your decision-making, but we want to have Gerald Bushberg here to ask, answer any questions you have. But that I'll turn it over to Mr. Bushberg.
Good evening, members of the council. I'm Gerald Bushberg. As I said, I'm just recently retired emeritus, clinical professor of radiology and radiation oncology at UC Davis. I reviewed the applicant's radio frequency reports and found them to be credible. I think there's only a couple of points I wanted to make. One is that I know a lot of people are concerned about new technology, and when you think about wireless in its current form, it's actually a combination of three relatively old and well-established technologies. It's the putting together of the computer, the telephone, and the radio in a way that allows for mobile telephony. And the old, the channels that we used to use and the television band, I don't know, some of you may not be old enough to remember when we had those UHF bands, we turned that dial pass 40, remember those? Well, those frequencies have been reallocated to wireless communications, and they actually used to be broadcast at much higher energy levels than are being used for mobile communications, but there, it is just a coming together and repurposing of something that we're actually much more familiar with than you might imagine. The other thing I would have you take into consideration is that, while you may hear a lot of things that have come from the internet or published scientific studies, one of the most important things to realize is that-
Sorry, you're gonna need to wind it up, please?
Not all studies are created equal, and it is not just the quantity, but the quality of the studies that's important, and that's why independent commissions are necessary to review and opine on the collective body of evidence. Thank you.
Thank you. So now, come back to me, to the council, questions from council members to the applicant? Any at this time? Yes, Mark?
Just please. Thank you. So the question, or the comment that I heard was this network of antennas that one of your employees designed. How many of these antennas are, is in that network to be installed in San Bruno, other than this one that we're talking about now?
We have nine applications that we've submitted to the City of San Bruno at this time. There are some more locations that have not been resolved yet because there are either no available structures, or the only available structures are city-owned streetlights, which at this point Verizon and the City of San Bruno have not come to an agreement for use on.
I have to say, regardless of whether we had one pole or nine poles approved, we would install that, that one pole. In other words, the, each small cell is independent in terms of the service it provides.
Got it. What is your other alternative than, than putting these antennas in a residential area? What would, what would that be?
Hello, Dwayne Bonham, RF engineer for Verizon Wireless, would be to put full-blown, what we call macro cell towers within the residential areas. The issues we're having now is the usage isn't confined to the industrialized areas of cities. People utilize their phones at their residences in the evenings. Many of our peak usage times on a lot of our sectors of our network are in the 9:00 to 11:00 p.m. range, when there's nobody in the industrial areas. The change in the way people have used the technology is requiring us to change the way that we design the networks. We're doing everything we can do to continue to provide service without putting in new facilities. It's cheaper for us to upgrade our old facilities than to put in new ones, so that's an advantage to us. However, serving large number of users in residential areas from a distance is not really possible anymore. The frequencies that we get, we purchase new frequencies, we're allocated new frequencies in order to expand our service. However, those frequencies end up to be higher frequencies. The higher the frequency and the higher the technology, 3G, 4G, eventually 5G, the smaller the area their cell site covers. So while this residential area may be served well currently in the voice technology from a site that's three miles away, as we get up to 4G and 5G, those sites will only cover out a mile, leaving these neighborhoods somewhat uncovered or with extremely slow speeds because the lower frequencies that get out that, to that distance will become overloaded. Hope that makes some sense.
I'd just like to clarify one thing, and that is that these networks cost about three times what it costs to install a network with macro cells. So the concept that this is somehow a less expensive way of providing service is completely inaccurate.
Laura?
Yeah, I have a few questions. So, so, I mean, there's room for people. And it's very obvious that they're against having a cell tower into their neighborhood, right? We're all residents here of San Bruno. And, you know, there's a concern, I would say, that you open the door, you allow this in Elm, it's coming into every other street in San Bruno. The nine applicants that are sitting there, there's no reason why we wouldn't want to approve those. And I think, and I've heard this a few times tonight, but I want to make sure that the residents understand this and those in the room understand this. The concern we're, discussion we're having isn't about the health risk. If I pull my phone out right now, I would tell you I have one bar on my, on my cellphone. And it's my understanding that the radio waves that I receive on my cellphone, if I was to put it up to my ear right now, is much greater than that cell tower if it should be installed on Elm. That the greater the signal strength is, the less the radio waves will be coming toward me. And we all use cellphones. I mean, in fact, many residents and many new millennials are coming in, don't even have cellphones. I mean, they have cellphones, they have house phones. So we're always on our cellphones. We want good coverage. We want to be able to make that phone call. More importantly, I want to be able to make that phone call in an emergency. And I've had to use that on a number of occasions. So there's a concern, right? The fact that between 9:00 and 11:00 p.m. is a peak service. Why is it peak? Because exactly what everybody's doing. They're finally home, they're away from their jobs, they have the opportunity to now talk to family, reach out to family members, we're on our cellphones. So I too, as a, as a council member, sit up here and have big concerns about the cellphone and the safety of it. So is there anything more that you can address to, again, appease our concerns? Because I care just as much as the rest of you care.
I think you make a very good point about the typical exposure most people have today in a modern society. The vast majority of people's exposure from radio frequency energy comes from either their cellphone, if they use a cellphone, or often from someone else's cellphone. And you also made the point, which was often misunderstood and somewhat counterintuitive, that when you have poor coverage, your phone actually broadcasts at its maximum intensity in order to be able to make the connection to the cell site. It's something called adaptive power control. And so the cell nearest antenna wants to see a signal at a certain level. And if you're, if you have very good coverage and you have all the bars on your phone, the, the site will tell, turn to, tell the phone to turn its power all the way down to its minimum level to make the connection, keep the noise down. When you have just the one bar, you're far away, you have a poor connection, the site will tell the phone to turn it up to its maximum. And the difference in your exposure between that minimum and that maximum is about 1,000 to 1. And so if you were to ask, the best way to reduce one's overall exposure and still have wireless technology would be to have very good coverage so that everyone was having their phone operated at its lowest possible power.
Thank you. Another question I would have, it would also be in reference to noise, right? I'd hate to have something humming in my backyard. I have a pole, and I went out to it. And you know, actually, you really don't realize how ugly those poles are, and the wires are off of them. I mean, there's a ton of wires, there's boxes, it's, it's coming to houses. It, it actually has grown over the years without even me even noticing it. But it is ugly, and I have a pole directly in my backyard. So tell me, if I'm going to be in bed at night, if I've got a pole in my backyard, am I going to hear a humming noise? Because that's going to irritate me.
First, I want to say for the record that that was Dr. Gerald Bushberg who gave that presentation, and I'm Paul Albritton, outside counsel. First, in meeting with your staff onsite, Verizon Wireless elected to remove the battery backup unit. The battery backup unit provides service in the event of a crisis, but it also has fans that cool the batteries. By eliminating the battery backup unit, we have removed all moving parts from this facility. The radios are designed to be passively cooled. They have fins on the back so that they're passively cooled. The antenna itself has no moving parts, so there is no noise whatsoever from this facility. So we absolutely comply with your, with your noise ordinance. I want to add, Verizon is not opposed to undergrounding. Should the facility, should you go through an undergrounding process, generally we find, and this is true in San Francisco and other cities, that streetlights are put in. And then we will, we will migrate our facilities to a streetlight topography. So the fact that we're putting an antenna on a utility pole doesn't mean it's going to be there forever. It's, it, we're, in fact, following that course through cities as they progress and modernize. So we're not mandating a utility pole, but we are taking advantage of it as existing vertical infrastructure and not installing our own pole, which we have the right to do. And then we've taken the battery backup units out, so there's absolutely no noise from these facilities.
Okay. I, and I have questions later, I'll ask after.
Okay, at this time, thank you very much, you may be seated.
Thank you.
City clerk, how many speaker cards do we have?
We have 11.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and do two minutes each for each speaker. And if the city clerk would begin with the first, please. And again, during this process, if we give the courtesy and respect to each speaker, all the ways from the start to the finish and the applause and other comments are not necessary. It really is sometimes hard to get up. We want to really have that confidence and give that courtesy to each person.
Karen Cromosini.
Thank you for, I would just like to say that I'm really concerned about this. It's just not about the, the big poles. I was wondering, would you like to have that in front of your house then? You know, and, but the health is that, have they really checked into that, if they really are held concern? And so I just would like to address that, that it's, I'm really against this, okay? Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Next, please.
Rhonda Sims.
Thank you, council members. I asked this council to obtain and share the full rollout plan, as we had mentioned, and in their effort to propose and oppose the installation of the Verizon Towers. If the end-to-end plan is to install multiple towers, then all impacted citizens in San Bruno should be informed, not just those within 300 to 500 feet of the first proposed tower installation. All citizens should be provided access to the data that details the risks and benefits of the tower placement and function. And this is in detail, the location, appearance, sound, if there is any, which we've already determined, liability, who's responsible for damages to health and property, safety to the environment, et cetera. And then given this opportunity for all the citizens to have an open forum and vote to approve or deny any installation. Approving Verizon's plan without transparency to the citizens of San Bruno means this council may have ignored documented impacts of the tower design and function on people's health, environment, and aesthetics of our neighborhoods. But most impactful is that the council made the decision in a vacuum, uninformed, and without regard to the voice of the people who voted them into office. San Bruno isn't the first town Verizon has pushed on, and we are going to be the last that they do. Help me defend my right to health and safety in my town. I ask this council to say no when the time comes to the Verizon's tower installation. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Rhonda. Next, please. Next speaker, please.
Allison Mizola.
Today I went to our local Verizon store. The representative there assured me that I could drive an hour in any direction from my home and not encounter any coverage gaps. The Telecommunications Act of 1996 would allow these towers if there was a gap in coverage, not when there was only a lack of bandwidth. It's only about coverage. Since there is no gap, this regulation does not apply in this case. Cappuccino High School has become an asset to our community. The new rec center will also be an asset to the community. These 4G and soon 5G cellphone towers, however, will not be. I'm raising my family in this community, and the danger to our health is huge. Everyone knows not to use their cellphone towers, their cellphones a lot. We're able to put the phone down and walk away, but these towers will be in our neighborhood 24/7. I am concerned for fire safety with these tall towers and the high winds. I'm concerned for our property values. We all know that San Bruno has lots of wind. Look what happened in the North Bay. This could happen to us as well. If you approve these towers in our neighborhoods, you'll be putting the health and safety of our families at risk for no reason.
Thank you, Allison. Next speaker, please.
Richard Baker.
Please, folks.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm going to read my notes very quickly, my bullet points. The Verizon 5G cell tower is what I'm looking at this as. I'm a Verizon customer within the 300 feet of the proposed location. Current LTE levels appear to be just fine where I live. Two of four signal bars, both inside my house and on the sidewalk outside, three of four outside 123 Elm. So there does not appear to be a lack of coverage where the site is going up. I'm concerned with the current telephone poles supporting the additional height in the hurricane winds that we do get. We get sustained hurricane 70 mile an hour winds in the winter, and we're looking at 100 mile an hour gusts. Will this additional height, again, apply enough force to start knocking poles over? Concern with the techno-blight of the pole-mounted hardware and the new poles going up. I was going to say that the AT&amp;T DSL boxes that are positioned around the city are not an attractive addition with their concrete footpoint, footprints, footprints and the metal casings. They are not an attractive thing in this, this neighborhood. Why do we need the residential neighborhood cell site? I have heard that Verizon provided motherhood and apple pie. We've also heard that there's capacity issues. The network design, the back hall, the latency, the fault-tolerant redundancy and how it's built out, it would be very interesting if the public could have a look at that as well. Our neighborhood lost its telephone service when AT&amp;T was cut the wires a couple of years ago. San Bruno Municipal Cable's been out several times. The back hall that we've been looking at is not going to be reliable for any special purposes, and it's Verizon's 4G that has helped us be able to communicate. The introduction of 5G, when it happens, is a mesh network. It does not eliminate 4G, so 4G will continue, and 5G is a new low-path item. The last thing is, I really don't want to have these poles and these structures in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard, for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Paul Larson.
Hi, my name's Paul Larson. My residence is 123 Elm Avenue in San Bruno. I've been a resident for 34 years. My address at 123 is the first of 17 proposed Verizon small cell antennas, which we were told. The pole at this site is slated, is directly in front of our home and is less than 30 feet from my master bedroom. The thought of the exposure to re, to radiation and electromagnetic fields at such a close range and other potential dangers 24/7 makes us very fearful for ourselves and our children, and particularly our grandbabies. Would you like to have this looming over your head as you lay in bed at night? We do not want this in front of our home, not even in our neighborhood. They belong in an industrial or commercial area. There has to be an alternate site. They have exempted the firehouses throughout the state from having cell sites in close proximity because they live, work, and sleep there two to three nights a week. Please give our residential areas the same consideration. The safety and well-being of the San Bruno residents is our first responsibility. Please stop this from happening to my family and neighbors and the other 16 families and neighbors of the other proposed sites. Brolingay, Mowbray, Monterey, and Santa Rosa have said no to Verizon. We, the people of San Bruno, are all saying no, not in our community. And yes, I do want to look out my front window. Do not want to look out my front window and see ugly apparatus hanging off the pole in front of my home. This may be just the start of all the other cellphone companies piggybacking off this door you may be opening. Let's stop it right now. Close that door. I ask you to please deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, Paul. Next speaker, please.
Stacy Tolentino.
Good evening, Mayor Medina, city council members and neighbors. My name is Stacy Tolentino, and I've been a resident of San Bruno for 29 years and a homeowner here for 23 years, where my husband and I have been raising our family. So it's safe to say that we love this city. Our neighborhood is a close-knit one, so even though the City of San Bruno was not very transparent about this cell tower issue, our dear neighbors spread the word. So I'm here tonight to let all of you know that I do not want cell towers in San Bruno. Make no mistake, Verizon presented this cell tower project as a 4G installation, but their plan is to upgrade it to 5G technology. On a February 2018 episode of the Dr. Oz Show, Desiree Jorowski, executive director of the Center for Safer Wireless, said, "I think it's outrageous that we're going to be bathed in 5G frequencies when there really hasn't been adequate testing in this country to make sure that we're not going to be impacted by it." On the same show, radiologist and medical journalist Dr. Nicole Saphier said, "We don't have anything thus far on long-term chronic effects on low-dose radiation." That is where I'm concerned. I have the same concerns, as I'm sure most of you do as well. Another concern I have is regarding the safety of the age telephone poles where the cell towers would be placed. Nina, Nina Beatty, an educator and member of the California EMF Safety Committee, said this on June 9th, 2017, in the East Bay Times. "Look around you and see the leaning, bowing poles next to homes and buildings, hanging over streets and sidewalks. Malibu Mayor Andy Stern called these time bombs. Add more gear, multiply the number of poles impacted, and what will-" over streets and sidewalks." Malibu Mayor Andy Stern called these "time bombs." Add more gear, multiply the number of poles impacted, and what will be the result? Well, in 2007, the result was the devastating Malibu fires caused by overloaded telecommunications on utility poles for which Verizon and other popular cellphone companies were to blame. Nina Beatty also reported that FCC exposure guidelines were derived from industry, and there is no policing or compliance testing of cell towers. I'm almost done, please.
Thank you.
Many exceed federal limits. So how is it that the Planning Commission of the City of San Bruno thinks it's okay to approve cell towers which haven't been tested or studied? This is unacceptable. It will put our health and safety at risk just for the sake of faster uninterrupted internet speeds. So I urge you, on behalf of more than 40,000 citizens of San Bruno, to reverse the decision you made on June 19. Please do not allow Verizon to install a cell tower on Elm Street or anywhere in our city. This will show us that San Bruno really is a city with a heart.
Thank you for your comments, Stacy. Please, folks, I've asked no applause. And just as a reminder, when it goes yellow, you'll notice that that's about a 30 seconds to start to wind it up, and I'm not going to cut anybody right off, but if we can kind of try to keep to the time so everybody has the equal. You're very welcome. Next speaker, please.
Susan Burns.
Well, council, you can look around. You can see we are here, San Bruno. Only a few of us were notified about the cell tower Verizon wants to install on Elm Avenue, which will be one of many. But we don't want them in our neighborhoods, and we don't want the exposure of radiation around our families, our friends, and our neighbors. So here each and every one of us that were here speaking tonight, because we are San Bruno.
Sorry. Thank you very much. Here's the next speaker.
Elene Tripsa.
Elene Tripsa at 152 Acacia Avenue, an owner and resident for 33 years, same location, San Bruno. I am a Verizon customer, and I have no problems whatsoever at any time of the day. I noted when the staff gave the oral report, they claimed that they gave notice to 600 feet radius. I have the letter in front of me. It states 300. I went around, spoke with my neighbors. They did not know anything was taking place. They're in the shadows, and we are all very upset that we don't know what is going on in our city. I was in the June 19 first meeting that it passed against objections of 3 to 0. There are supposed to be seven planning commissions. One was absent. One said no. Two abstained. Three said, "Yeah, let's do this." No, that is not acceptable. The numbers do not compute. Three people can put all of our lives in jeopardy without any studies, without any consideration for our input? I say no. You need to overturn this. We need to do better justice for all of us. There was a question discussing the 50-feet mark that we're not allowed in San Bruno. Really? It was three inches. Three inches makes a difference in our lives? No. Okay? 49 feet, 10 inches shy of what is allowable, you know, under the 50. That's where they did the cutoff? Come on. We're not playing with inches here. We're playing with our lives, with our safety. This is not acceptable. Please, take all of us into account. Thank you. And reverse the decision that was made. That was wrong.
Thank you, Lady Tripsa. Please.
Stephen Seymour.
Can we please, could you, I know there are three more speakers, I believe?
We had one withdraw.
Okay, so we have to, can you call the next couple up so that they can?
Stephen Seymour, and the last speaker will be Zedane Milli.
Just so everybody can get up and others to get through the crowd. Okay. I'm sorry. Mr. Seymour.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight proves our community can rally around important issues. David Waltering, our Community Development Director, stated that this tower is consistent with San Bruno's general plan. Looks like our general plan needs some updating. San Bruno needs greater transparency in all business matters. That's been brought up by many of the speakers. I learned about this through Nextdoor. I don't live anywhere near this, but I learned about it through Nextdoor. I don't want it in my neighborhood either. I'm encouraged by the public's concern and tonight's participation. I encourage everyone to keep your eyes open, pay attention to our city's direction. As a community, we can change San Bruno's direction. We can influence our elected officials to listen to those who elected them. And I ask everyone in this room to visit San Bruno Now Facebook page. Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you, Stephen. Next speaker.
Zedane Milli.
Zedane.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. I'm Zedane Milli, and...
My name is Jeffrey, and I want to show safety when I put my eyes...
Okay, so I'm 17. I live on 161 Acacia Avenue, and I've grew up here my whole life, so I care about my city, and I'll do anything to ensure our safety. So I'm going to keep this speech short and simple. I just want to emphasize the safety concern that many members of our community have. I want to make sure that the people feel safe and that their safety is ensured. We want to keep the safety of the children also, and I know that there are concerns with the radiation, the sound, and the stability of the towers. The radiation, to me, is like a snowball effect in which radiation increases over time, thus making members of the community unsafe. Keeping in mind that other cities have also said no to this tower, it only makes sense for San Bruno to not have this tower also. We want to avoid future disasters and keep our city safe from future catastrophes. Before I end, just take in consideration all of our comments and concerns. Thank you for your time. I appreciate you for giving us time to speak about the tower, and I'm confident that you will make the right decision, which is to oppose the cell tower. Thank you.
Thank you, Zedane. Thank you to both of you for coming up to the podium. Folks, let's give each other a round of applause. Thank you very much. Thank you for your diligence and patience and courtesy to all the speakers, and thank you for being here and your comments. If there are no other speaker cards or speakers at this time, I'm going to ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Can we go around once more, make sure everybody, nobody else wants to speak?
Yeah, this is only on the cell towers. Just the cell towers. Yes, sir.
I did fill out a card when I came in, but after listening to the presentation...
So because you've sat through all this, absolutely. Please come right to the podium. You'll have the same two minutes. Folks, this is why we do the cards, is so that we can do that. So this is the last speaker, to my knowledge, and please, and if you could fill out the card for the city clerk when you're done, just so she has that, that would be helpful. Thank you.
I found this very enlightening, listening to everyone's point of view, but not hearing very little from the City Council members on your point of view. So two of the questions I have are, it was raised that certain cities have denied this opportunity to Verizon. I believe Burlingame was one, and I believe Samhatale. Please correct me. And then there were two cities outside of Samhatale County. So my question to the board is, how many of you knew about these cities who had turned down this application prior to you considering it? It's a rhetorical question. You don't have to answer me right now, but I think it's significant. How many of you knew that? And whether you knew it or didn't know it is significant. My second question is, how many of you have entered into communication with those cities who turned this down to find out why they turned it down? So you would have a greater knowledge base to make your decision. So what I'm asking is that you don't passively continue a decision that you're allowed to happen, but that you actively investigate this issue and make an informed decision on whether to accept or deny this request. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming to the podium. I appreciate it. All right. He was the last. Applause is okay. Okay, so with that...
To the chair?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing at this point.
Is there a second?
Second.
So that will close the public hearing this evening, and then when we reconvene on the decision-making, that will still remain closed. So this is to close the public hearing from now. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Now, next on, issue C, number eight, is city response, if there is some, to the appellant's presentation.
We're not done yet. We're not done with the topic just yet, so if people want to stick around, there's more.
So the next step, but it's on the agenda, is that the staff will go ahead and have a response to the appellant's presentation of up to five minutes. Go ahead, Dave.
Mr. Mayor and Council members, as I indicated in the staff presentation, our intent really this evening is to receive information. So we received, as you did, the appellant's and the applicant's presentations, and we've recommended to the City Council that you allow both the appellant and the applicant to provide replies back to staff by August 7. We would receive that information. We would research and do analysis. A number of speakers tonight suggested that additional analysis would be done. Based on the information we heard tonight, we would do that additional analysis. We would provide a thorough written report to the City Council for your review and consideration. And again, as I indicated earlier, we would then suggest to you, recommend to you, that you continue this item for your consideration of our report and your deliberation to a date certain, the date certain being September 25. Thank you.
Okay. With that, there were a couple things, just to recap. It was to ask of the applicant and the appellant by August 7 to have any additional information into staff, so they can be reviewed in adequate time, so it can be brought back on the 25th. Because obviously, it gets in right before, as has happened in this situation, to do out of fairness, you know, as somebody asked, "How come we're not saying what our feelings are?" Because we're not in the decision tonight, and so we don't want to bias ourself with the additional information that will be coming forward. What I'd also ask is, at that time, to staff, we have, I think most of my colleagues are writing down some of the questions. Some of them are some of the concerns that they have, whether it's the pole, whether it's the safety, a variable of questions. Can those also be addressed within that presentation on the 25th?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I've also been listing the comments tonight, so we have those as well.
And what also, the city clerk, with her new form, you will be emailed, if you've asked for it, the email, so you'll know our next meeting, and you'll know it's on the agenda. Also, you can go to the staff report when it goes out on that Friday, so that you have adequate time over the weekend to read any additional answers and information as well. So we'll be learning about all the answers together. So any other, at this time, we're going to move to the City Council consideration for continuing the matter to the future meeting, which would be the August 25. Mr. Mayor?
To the chair?
Yes.
Pardon me. The idea is that the appellant and the applicant submit information to staff by August 7, and then the continuance of this matter would be to September 25.
My apologies. Thank you for correcting me. I need to listen better.
To the chair, can we address the issue that I've heard that, you know, I haven't been notified. I wasn't notified of this. I had to see it on Nextdoor. I had to get it forwarded through somebody else. Can you address the policy in the process?
So going on to the vice mayor, so some questions were raised. It's 300 feet on a form. It stated verbally 600 feet. So I think that is one thing. It's that, how is it really notified? I know I received a notification for where I lived for some other project. So what was, what was, how is, and how will it be?
I'd be happy to respond to all of those questions. My understanding is that the noticing for Planning Commission was a 300-foot radius. As we move forward with this appeal, the information I received was that the notification was expanded to 600 feet plus the newspaper. I would propose that we stay by that, that for the September 25 hearing, meeting, that we would do a 600-foot radius mailing. We would also do the newspaper notification, and, Mr. Mayor, as you indicated tonight, if there are people here that indicated an interest in receiving the agenda, we can check with the city clerk, obtain that information, and make sure that those people as well receive notifications. So I would propose those individuals that indicate a desire to receive notification, a 600-foot radius, and newspaper for the September 25 meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Irene?
Yes, I've been looking through some of the information that's in our packet, which is over 100 pages. So is it appropriate for, as we go through this again, to send you any other questions that we might have? Is that kosher to do? Okay. Then I will do that.
David, yes.
Actually, if you would send those to the city manager, then we can make sure that all of the relevant staff who may be involved in this matter can have an opportunity to know the questions and to provide pieces of the answers.
Okay. Thank you. I will.
And to council, would it be acceptable by August 7 as the appellant and the applicant, so staff has adequate time for the September 25 continuance?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So then we will go ahead, and to council, we will go ahead, and again, appellant, applicant, August 7, and then reconvene on this matter on September 25.
To the chair?
Yes.
If I could, we did get a communication from the city attorney regarding matters that he would be pursuing and investigating, but I would like to expand on what issues he has provided and ask him to also look into some of the issues that our last speaker brought up in terms of what are the neighboring communities doing. I've done a lot of research, but it was really limited to what I could find on the internet, what's been published, court documents. So there is some information, but I think hearing it firsthand from those communities would be important. I think, Mark, you mentioned that each city does have its own set of ordinances that would influence what those decisions were, but I think that is important information to bring back to us when we reexamine this.
Yes, it will be, and it has been on our list of things to do before the next meeting.
And again, they have all the questions, so my expectation would be that all these questions that these folks asked will have some follow-up.
Okay.
And thank you for pointing that out, because it's a bit more technical. Okay, then we will go ahead, and we're going to move on from this topic. Why don't we take about a five-minute break, so everybody can feel comfortable to go ahead and depart and say goodbye.
May I please ask for Susan Burns to come to the city clerk, please?
Susan, can you go see the city clerk, please? All right, let's call back the meeting of the San Bruno City Council. There are no reports of committee commissioners or boards. The next item is public comment.
Thomas Miller.
This is for items that are not on the agenda. Mr. Miller? And thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I do want to, don't want to take your time. I know you've got a very busy agenda. You're going to be having, busy for the next 30 or 40 days with the issue I heard tonight. The only reason I came before you tonight is I feel a concern for what has been going on in our country. When I drilled in the Army Reserve in my military training and my civilian, I was in a diverse workplace. We learn diversity. We learn values, and I took those values very seriously. And what has really upset me, and why I'm concerned for the community here in San Bruno at large, is I'm afraid that our President of the United States has carte blanche, which he does via the Congress and the courts, to just go ahead and say it's okay to hate. And that is the thing... And that is the thing that is really bothers me, that people have been fired up, and I'm afraid for all of our Latino business people, or anybody in the community of any color and ethnicity, might be in danger or be a problem of getting hurt. I had an experience one time, I was going to the library, from the library, I'd get my internet, and some guy said, "Hey, do you know Muslims are gay?" And I says, "What do you mean?" And I got away from him. I could have gotten him, I could have fought him, but I'd have been in jail. You understand? And we have to be aware of the danger of what these people present. I don't want to have somebody, a bunch of them show up on San Mateo Avenue or anything and put everybody's life in danger. You know, guys running a business, or some Latino lady's pushing her kids down the street, and she gets attacked or gets ridiculed, and he has carte blanche. So I think, you know, you may want to consider this as you, through your Public Safety Committee, as well as the Chief of Police. So again, I want to thank you very much for allowing me to have the time.
Thank you very much for comments. Now we'll move on to conduct of business.
Item 9A, approved design and adopt resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract with KJ Woods Construction for the Crystal Springs Road Sewer Replacement Project in the amount of $3,348,000, and approving a construction contingency of $502,200, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for construction management and inspection services with Four Leaf in an amount not to exceed $230,720, approving a total project budget in the amount of $4,469,581, and appropriating an additional $1,149,581 from the wastewater fund.
Thank you. Jimmy?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. The item in front of you tonight is regards to the sewer improvements project along Crystal Springs Road. The primary purpose of the project is to alleviate capacity deficient sewer pipelines along Crystal Springs Road and to reduce the risk of future sanitary sewer overflows. This project is one of the capacity-related projects required to be completed as part of consent decree with San Francisco Baykeeper. Unfortunately, the project has been delayed due to permitting issues with Caltrans. Caltrans took approximately one year in issuing an encroachment permit for the project. In addition, the San Mateo Avenue Water and Sewer Replacement Project needed to be completed prior to this project, since the pipelines connect to one another. Due to the delay, staff provided an updated project schedule to Baykeeper in the annual sanitary sewer overflow summary report submitted to Baykeeper earlier this year, and Baykeeper was pleased with the city's progress to meet SSO reductions and performance goals, and didn't have any comments on the overall schedule of the project. So this project consists of constructing approximately 3,000 feet of sewer mains, ranging from eight inches to 24 inches in diameter. The project limits will be from the intersection of Oak and Crystal Springs Road to intersection of El Camino and San Mateo Avenue. Construction along El Camino will be required, which is, was the reason why an encroachment permit from Caltrans was needed. The pipeline will connect to the new manhole constructed as part of the recently completed San Mateo Water and Sewer Replacement Project at the intersection of San Mateo Avenue and El Camino. The construction for the San Mateo Avenue Water and Sewer Project was completed ahead of schedule, and under the approved overall project budget. And staff will be bringing to council the report to close out the project soon. To select a contractor for this project, you know, it was advertised in the San Mateo County Newspaper twice, once on June 6th and the other on June 13th. A total of four bids were received and opened on June 29th, ranging from $3.3 million to $3.9 million. The lowest bid was received from KJ Woods Construction in the amount of approximately $3,348,000, which was about $34,500 or 0.01% higher than engineer's estimate. Staff is recommending to award the project to KJ Woods, since the company has the qualifications and experience in completed numerous projects involving sewer mains, replacement for public agencies for the city of San Francisco, town of Hillsborough, and as well as San Bruno. In San Bruno, KJ Woods completed the construction of the Canes and San Mateo Avenue Bypass Project in 2015. Based on experience and performance with other agencies in San Bruno, staff determined that KJ Woods meets the qualifications to perform the work for the project specified in the contract documents. Construction management inspection services by a consulting firm is also being recommended by staff to provide dedicated inspections and oversight to ensure effective and timely delivery of the project. The inspector will be on-site full-time and will work closely with businesses along El Camino and address concerns related to traffic circulations and construction issues. One of the project goal is to minimize the impacts to the businesses and surrounding neighborhood, and having a dedicated full-time inspector will help. A dedicated inspector is also necessary, since the portion of the work along El Camino is required to be performed at night by Caltrans to avoid traffic impacts. The work hours for construction within the Caltrans right-of-way will be from 9:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. The city received a total of four proposals for construction management services and inspection services from Tana Pacific, CSG Consultants, Park Engineering, Four Leaf. All the proposals were reviewed for completeness, team qualifications, and relevant experience, and staff is recommending Four Leaf to provide the construction management inspection services for the project. And Four Leaf has completed construction management inspection services for cities such as Cupertino, Mill Valley, Warner Creek, Lathrop, and Pacifica, and is considered to have the experience and qualifications to perform the work. In regards to community outreach, staff will be performing public outreach on this project similar to other pipeline projects, since the construction will have impacts on the residents in the project vicinity, such as temporary roadway closures, noise, dust, access in and out of private properties. Currently, staff anticipates the road segments along Crystal Springs Road will be required to be blocked, to be blocked from, constructed from block to block, since there's a single lane in each direction. Parking will also be restricted within each segment where construction work will take place. Detour signs throughout pedestrians and sidewalk access and vehicle traffic will be posted as well. And at the end of each day, the road will be reopened. Construction work hours will be limited to a.m. to 5:00 p.m. along Crystal Springs Road, and notifications letters will be sent to the residents and property owners. And staff anticipates the project to begin in construction in November and be completed within five months, and the entire roadway within the project limits will also be slurry sealed after the construction of the pipeline. So as for the fiscal impact, the 2018-2023 capital improvement program budget includes the carryover balance of about $3.2 million for this project, and a total estimated project budget that includes the design, construction, the construction contingency, and the construction management inspection services, and staff project management is approximately $4.5 million. An additional request of $1.15 million from the wastewater capital fund is needed for this project. And this sewer, this Crystal Springs Sewer Project is funded by the 2017 wastewater revenue bonds proceeds, and there's approximately $20 million in balance, which is sufficient to fund this project. So this concludes my presentation, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for the presentation and information. Questions, comments from council?
Through the chair.
Laura?
I noticed, so the timeline, time is 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and have we ever maybe started the project a little bit later? I know with traffic in the morning, with schools, and, you know, can you delay it by even 30 minutes, start at work between 8:30 and 5:00?
Yes, that can be done.
Thank you. The, um, the construction management, $230,000 over five months, seems high to me. Can you expand on what services are going to be provided for roughly, what, $45,000 a month?
Right, so it'll be a full-time inspector on-site for daytime and nighttime work within Caltrans right-of-way, and there'll be a construction management manager as well, who will be overseeing the entire project. So the inspector will be out in the field, and then there's a construction manager will be overseeing the project as a project manager. This is, this cost is very similar to other sewer pipeline projects that we brought to council. The one for San Mateo Avenue, which was approximately five months as well, it was about $299,000 for that project. Very similar to the one for the Crestmore Lumina pump stations, with over, you know, $400,000 for CM Services Inspection Services. So this is, it's not unusual for this amount.
Given that we, we have so many of these infrastructure projects that are in the pipeline, and other development projects that are out there, isn't there an opportunity for us to have, you know, we saw that the planning department brought some limited-term employees in to help with sort of this cycle of increased activity? And if we're going to have more of these type of projects, and these services are that expensive, do we get to the point where it makes more sense to have a limited-term employee doing these kind of things consistently, and, you know, with a better knowledge of, over time, better knowledge of our locality?
Yeah, the thought is for us, you know, the ideal situation is for us to have a project inspector in-house, that would be able to perform all these work. We, currently, we have one inspector in-house that's doing a lot of the encroachment permit applications. We've gone through recruitments for inspectors, and there's very little, you know, qualified candidates that are out there, and bringing in a candidate that doesn't have the experience to come and manage these or to perform the inspection on these, that's not an ideal situation for us to. I don't want to have to train a person to be, to come over here and, you know, having to deal with this complex type of a project. So with that, you know, we went out for inspection, inspector recruitment three times already, and we have an ongoing continuous recruitment right now. The last time I checked, there were only 16 applicants, and none of them really apply, none of them qualified. Up and down the peninsula, other agencies are having the same issues, trying to find a qualified inspector and engineers. There's a shortage of inspector engineers out right now. Menlo Park is trying to continue to hire it as well, for inspector engineers, they haven't been able to find one.
Okay. Thank you for that background, I appreciate that information. The other question I had was just related to any penalties that we include in our contracts for delays that are avoidable by the contractors. Do we have that type of language typically in our infrastructure projects?
It is, it's a liquidated damages clause in there, it's part of the agreement. Don't recall what this amount is, it could be $1,000 here per day, going over the contractual amount, contractual duration.
Great, okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Marty?
Those are great questions, by the way. It's true, inspectors are, they're tough to get right now. Where I work, we're looking for one, and it's hard, they've been looking for a long time, and the people we get, they come on-site, and it's like, they don't really know anything. But I still think the effort that we, we probably have, at least 20 million in sewer projects still to do, and another 40 million in water projects to do, more or less. So we, we, I, we can't give up on the recruitment, and we may have to look at increasing the incentive for people to come back and give to San Bruno. So I'd like to see how that works out. Clearly, we need to get this done now. It is a lot of money for five months, and my concern on this project is the water infiltration that during, during the rainy season, and having to bypass the sewer. Depending on which location of the sewer basin is, I recall that some areas, the infiltration is really, really high, so you, so trying to put pipe in and bypass the sewer around the others, it could be, it could be a lot more than anybody anticipates. So I'm just a little cautious of anytime trying to do a sewer project in the winter. Your production is really slow, you're on, you're on the streets, probably your production gets reduced by half, and then the rain days, you have so many rain days in the contract, and being aware of that. I heard that you're going to slurry seal, so you're going to, you're, a T trench, you're going to, you're going to go ahead and pave the trench, but we're only going to slurry seal the road. Is that going to be an effective use of, of having a street that has this kind of decent section? I'm guessing it's in the middle, normally the sewer's in the middle, and, and then the edges of it are just going to have, slurry is just a little bit of oil and sand, and I'd be interested in hearing, to do an alternative of actually paving that. If you're already out there and you're tearing it up, and the sides of the road are going to get damaged too, from, from the heavy traffic. So I just wanted to throw that out to you. I know it's more money, but I'd rather make one big mess and get it all done, and then again, we're paving in the winter, right? It's something that I can't stand to try to do. The last thing is, is for our public to understand, we're going to spend $4 million on 3,000 feet, okay? We have miles of pipe to replace at some point, right? I know these are big pipes, eight to 24, that's big, but it's really a small segment of our overall city sewer program, our sewer system, so. The last question is, the $1.15 million more that we're asking for, and is that when it was originally budgeted, is the extra cost that are coming up now, or is, where, where, can you help me understand why it's that much more needed than originally budgeted?
Yeah, so we, we had, the project numbers, the budget that was used in the CIP were from a work plan that was about to develop a little, few years ago by a consulting firm, and so during the budgets, you know, we didn't escalate the numbers to the need of what is required, so we didn't include the contingency in there, that's over half a million dollars, I believe, you know, for contingency, and as well as the inspection costs, worth another $200,000, something thousand dollars as well. So there's, there's other, you know, costs that were included, and staff management costs as well, so that comes out to be about, close to about $1.1 million.
Okay.
Yeah. And in regards to your question about slurry seal, the PCI for the roadway is above 70 PC, you know, 70, so normally, we don't want to, you know, use a mill and fill and, you know, waste more money to try to do that, and, and so we would try to just do a slurry seal on this roadway, and then possibly use that money for other filled street locations. That's the reason why we select the slurry seal.
But you'll evaluate the street after all this heavy equipment, because you're going to have the excavator, like, right on the outside of that trench, and it's going to have some interesting issues there, so.
Yeah.
It's 70 now, but we'll see what it's going to be after the project's completed on the outer edge of it, right? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Any action of council?
I'd like to introduce the resolution.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Next item?
Motion, Chair, yes. Item 9B, adopt resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Group Four for the Recreation and Aquatic Center project schematic design and construction drawings in an amount not to exceed $5,420,388 to be funded through a grant from the San Bruno Community Foundation.
City Manager Connie Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This is an exciting additional opportunity to move forward on our Recreation Center and Aquatic Center project that you last heard about on July, I'm sorry, June 26th, at which time, Group Four and staff presented the final work product for the conceptual design or phase one of the overall project. Group Four completed the conceptual design process after having been awarded a contract in December of 2017 to complete that work, began work in June, and completed on time and on budget precisely as scheduled on June 26th, 2018. At the time that Group Four was selected to do this work, that selection occurred as a result of an RFPQ or a Request for Proposals or a result of an RFPQ or Request for Proposals or Qualifications process that was initiated by the city in order to locate a qualified architectural firm to complete the conceptual design work to begin the process towards the ultimate design and construction of the project. That solicitation yielded 10 proposals by highly qualified firms, all of whom were very anxious for a project to assist the city with this project, both because it's a wonderful opportunity to develop something that will, that will be an amenity in this community for a very long time, but also because of the opportunity articulated in the RFP to possibly, for the city to possibly waive a subsequent RFP process for selection of the architect to continue on for the actual schematic design and the construction drawing phases of the design project. In other words, we left open that, the city's process for selection of the design consultant to continue into Phase Two or the actual construction drawing phase of the project. After a careful and thorough review of the proposals that we received last December, staff interviewed five applicants, five proposers, and ultimately, after a fairly extended additional review process, when we whittled it down to two firms, we ultimately recommended to you and you authorized a contract for the first phase work with Group Four. As I mentioned earlier, Group Four completed their work on time and on budget. They also created a wonderful vision that is entirely expressive of the community's needs and interests with respect to this project. Group Four reached out in a variety of different ways to the public to gather input, conducted meetings, held pop-up events at community gatherings, and overall was extremely successful in engaging a very large number of citizens within our community and developing a design concept that, as I said, well-meets the aspirations and expectations of the community. Phase Two work consists of several primary components. Those include a schematic design development that will precise the design features that were articulated in the conceptual design process, will complete design development and review both in-house as well as through the city, and develop construction documents that are reviewed by the city carefully and thoroughly at 30, 60, and 90 percent. In addition, this phase of work will include the preparation of bid documents, support to the city in conducting the bidding process and the award of a construction contract, and then support throughout the construction phase of the project. So the work that we're talking about tonight begins now and takes us all the way through the construction of the project with architectural design development and construction support provided by an architectural firmer, firm. We're recommending to you tonight that that firm be Group Four. As I indicated before, although this is a very large dollar of value contract, we believe that an additional solicitation for a design professional is not indicated based on our good working relationship and the exceptionally good work product and process that Group Four undertook for us. There's, there's, there's really sort of nothing better than testing a firm's capability and their ability to interact and engage with us appropriately than actually working with them as we have over the last six months. So staff is recommending to you strongly tonight that we continue this process forward with Group Four for the reasons I mentioned, as well as for the opportunity to move directly from the conceptual design phase into the actual final design development process without delay. And that delay could potentially be two or perhaps even more months if we were to return to the open market with an additional solicitation. A little bit about the work that Group Four has done and some of the issues that will be addressed thoroughly through the design development process. And I'll, I mentioned earlier that Group Four completed and developed the conceptual design. They are obviously well familiar with it. And I think have, that familiarity will allow us to not only complete this next phase of work expediently, but also with a detailed understanding of what that, what those design features really mean to the community by virtue of Group Four having conducted those many, many conversations with residents of, of the community, with staff, with the city council, with the Parks and Rec Commission and others. Group Four is acutely aware of the city's, not only its needs for this project, its aspirations for this project, but also for the strong concern that we have about maintaining this entire project within the $50 million budget that has been provided to us or will be incrementally provided to us as a grant from the San Bruno Community Foundation. $50 million sounds like a lot of money and in fact, it is a lot of money. We have spent to date, just under $400,000 on the Phase One work. We're proposing to you tonight a contract that is just a bit over $5.4 million. And we obviously have a fair amount of ways to go. And as you know, the project budget is actually quite tight based on the design components that we have already reviewed and, and have approved as, as our conceptual design. As I said, Group Four is mindful of the budget. They understand clearly that this project needs to come in at or under the $50 million threshold. And Group Four has developed specific strategies to that end. I expect that this will be a continuing, both a challenge as well as a top-of-the-mind activity for Group Four, for staff, for the council as we move forward through this, through this process. Specifically, Group Four has proposed the design development to include design of all of the features that have been previously identified for the project, but that the bidding process be segmented so that certain design features, for example, the outdoor pool, be completed and incorporated into the bid process as an additive alternate, which means that a unique price for that feature would be provided by contractors bidding on the project. And the city could decide at the time of award of the contract whether or not to proceed with that feature based on total budget and cost proposed for the construction. In addition to that, Group Four is proposing to package certain design elements of the project in order to minimize cost escalation due to time and a, not an entirely advantageous bidding market that we've been encountering over the last period of time and anticipating for the, at least the near-term future, that rather than wait and, and bid the entire project as one big, one big unit, including both site-related work as well as building-related work, the thought is that Group Four would, would carefully evaluate the opportunity to segment the project into different packages and perhaps be able to develop the design and construction drawings and actually assist the city in bidding site work, for example, as a early and separate phase of the actual construction. We anticipate opportunities in that process also to stage construction aspects of the project so that we can marry that up and, and insert flexibility into the, into the construction process and avoid a, a complete shutdown impact to activities and programs that are delivered through the Recreation Center. We hope in this way to potentially impact the park area during part of the construction, but then get all of that done and then potentially with the demolition of the Recreation Center, then impact the Recreation Center, but not be impacting the whole park and the whole building at the same time. It remains to be seen whether those techniques will actually come to fruition in a manner that will, that will allow us to contain costs. But I mention them simply to reconfirm that Group Four, as well as staff, are committed to working through this project with a high level of attention and focus on those core issues that will ultimately be necessary in order to make this project a full-blown success. So what we're recommending to you tonight is that you authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Group Four for the schematic design and construction drawing phase of this project in an amount not to exceed $5.420,388. I will make one more comment and that is that there are a couple of things that you, you've become used to seeing in projects when we come to you with an award of contract, as Mr. Tan did just now. And that is a component for project management, in-house or adjunct, project management, staff support, and a, and a project contingency. Neither one of those are included right now because we want to get started and neither one of those are actually a feature directly of the contract with Group Four. But as we, as we get the ball rolling with the schematic design and the construction drawing phase, I, I wanted to alert the city council that you can expect that with our further conversations with the Community Foundation and perhaps with Group Four, there may be a need for a contingency, although having reviewed the Group Four proposal that is fully inclusive in the $5.4 million, I'm hard-pressed to think of another detail that's not in their about 15-page summary of the work scope that they, that they will be undertaking. And then secondly, project management would be potentially a separate contract. And I'll recommend to you right now that staff believes that will be an important component of the overall delivery of this project, beginning very soon and continuing through construction, to make sure that we have a qualified professional on our side whose job it is to watch this project, to communicate and coordinate directly and frequently with Group Four, to be able to speak that language and make sure that the project we need is developed, again, on time, on budget, and consistent with the community's expectations. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. And Representatives David Schne and his associate from Group Four are in the audience. And of course, our friend Leslie Hata Meeh from the San Bruno Community Foundation. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. Questions, comments from council? Michael?
Mayor Medina. I understand that there's been a subcommittee that's been overseeing this, the work so far. Is the mayor's intent to continue that subcommittee to oversee this project as the process moves forward?
So my understanding, what we had was an advisory and that was through the community outreach getting us kind of to this, this spot. So at that point, that task was kind of completed. So at this point, the, the one that the mayor and vice mayor has served on at this moment has concluded that, that line of work.
Okay. I might suggest and recommend that we perhaps continue that level of oversight. I think it was, it was useful. It was comforting to know that council members were involved in the process, staying a lot closer than just, you know, maybe every couple of months. And I don't doubt that that helped contribute to the, to the success of staying on task. So just a recommendation.
You're very kind, but it was a lot of folks that were in the room.
Absolutely.
From various levels, but okay. Excellent idea. Thank you very much.
If I might insert, I believe that the Group Four proposal includes a similar feature as a standard part of the way that Group Four works on projects like this. And staff agrees that, that direct coordination is going to be important to the overall success of the project. And I'm not, I'm not presuming, Mr. Mayor, that you would appoint yourself and, and the vice mayor. But a, a structure like we used before is anticipated as part of this project.
Well, so you got your answer. Of course, they listen to you, Michael, and the answer is yes, that will continue.
Okay. Great. So a question for the city manager, just regarding not putting this out to bid, is there any potential then that somebody could protest the fact that we didn't put it out to bid and make that an issue?
Well, so, so there's a couple of answers to that question. First of all, the, the primary answer to that is that this process was fully discussed in the previous RFP. And so not only the, the 10 firms that proposed on the project initially, but the plus or minus 30, it was between 30 and 40 folks that we sent to who received and read the solicitation, understood that, that this was contemplated early in the process as a possibility for the, for the process that we might use. And the second part of the answer is that while state law requires municipalities to use a public bid process for construction projects, for public works, construction project, it does not require a competitive solicitation via RFP or otherwise for this kind of work for professional services, which is what this is. However, that said, our municipal purchasing policies for the city of San Bruno do require such a solicitation. And it is generally considered best practice and certainly is something that we routinely do. But I think in this, in this case, we anticipated and vetted that issue and again, not only with the, with the folks who proposed, but the list of folks to whom we would solicit. And I think that issue was well-understood and was actually discussed quite clearly in the RFP.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you for that information. And I am confident with the work, with their ability and I think we've been well-represented with them so far. So, thank you.
Marty? Yes, thank you. You're welcome. So the price, how, how, how did that, how was it negotiated? Was that something that you, maybe I'll just leave it there. How did it come to 5.4 million?
So the 5.4 million dollars is the price that Group Four identified as the, the amount that was necessary to perform the scope of work that they identified, as I indicated, that went, that goes on for many pages in, in a great deal of detail. In, in order to truth-test that price, it's a lot of money. I asked our engineering staff to review the submittal from Group Four to evaluate whether it was complete and accurate, too much, is it, is it, is it what we should expect for a project like this? The answer to that was yes. And the additional question that I asked was, so what would be the typical amount? You know, this is a big bite out of $50 million. And the answer to that question was that the costs for this were- the costs for this work would generally be within a range of 10% to 15% of the total cost of the project, and we are well within that range at the low end, actually, just over 10% with this amount. So with those considerations, I hope that's responsive to the question. That's what we did in order to evaluate whether this proposal was acceptable.
Thank you. If we can get a copy of that scope of work, I think most people would probably want to have a copy of that to see what we're actually getting out of that $5.4 million.
Sure.
And let me, I'd like to ask, are we going to have pretty much the same players of that team? Is there, so you're nodding, yes, that's great. And because you guys really did a good job, and I was really impressed of the engagement and your community meetings and your design. I also share Michael's interest, and I think it's great that we have a subcommittee pursue that, and that's already in the scope of services, so it sounds like it's already done. We just have to figure out who's going to do it. And I really look forward to this. This is probably the most important thing San Bruno's going to do. We need to show our community that we can take a big project, and we could take care of that money and deliver an amazing product. So I'm in support of this. I look forward to it, and I love the idea that you're going to be looking into possibly breaking up the project into smaller segments so we can start getting some of the other parts parking in place as we move ahead, so thank you very much.
Laura, Irene, anything?
I'm in agreement. I mean, it's great, thank you for the presentation, excellent information. I have been overly impressed by Group Four. I appreciate their support, their dedication, the community outreach, the knowledge, their presentation, all the materials. You think it's kind of overshooting, maybe this presentation and showing up here, but you know what? It's all needed, and it's great, and you guys have done a well job. So I'd like to introduce resolution.
Michael, ahead.
One more question.
Michael.
I think I read somewhere that Group Four is also working on some other projects in neighboring communities, and I just wondering about timing, any potential for conflict, or would you be considering kind of staggering these projects so that there is no conflict on resources, or do you have enough resources to accommodate it all?
Hi there. I'm David Schne, Principal of Group Four, representing a whole project team. So we have a staff of just shy of 30, and so we can handle the multiple projects we've taken on, and we are fully committed to generating this project to meet all of the requirements on time, on budget, and to meet the community expectations that have been set so far through the conceptual design, through the schedule that we've been developing with the city. So we're confident we can deliver this project to you.
Okay. Thank you for confirming.
I think the councilman wanted to know if we were going to be top priority.
You bet.
That's what we wanted to hear. All right. He just asks it nicer. I just cut to the chase.
We're headed the game.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
I'd like to introduce resolution.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye. Next item.
Item 9C, receive city council's subcommittee report and adopt resolution approving the subcommittee's recommended increase in fines for parking violations defined in the California Vehicle Code and the San Bruno Municipal Code. We have one speaker present.
Connie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This item is returning to you from your conversation at your last council meeting on July 10th, at which time you received recommendations from staff for increases in our parking violation fines that have not been upgraded, or I'm sorry, increased or comprehensively reviewed since 2010. Well, the city council established a subcommittee consisting of councilmembers Salazar and Medina, who met separately, actually immediately after the meeting, and have rendered a different set of recommendations, and I would just call to your attention, so there was a little bit of confusion about the materials in the packet, and I believe we handed out to you tonight a hard copy of the spreadsheet that was reviewed and submitted by the subcommittee with green shading on the line, or the column, rather, showing the subcommittee's recommendations. That same spreadsheet also shows the previous staff recommendations and the current fees for ease of understanding. Just make one quick additional comment before I turn over to the subcommittee to answer your questions or provide any additional comments, and that is that once the city council acts on the fine schedule that is best meets your interest, then we will do some additional work to prepare that into a spreadsheet along with late penalty charges that are part of the overall fine schedule, and package that to submit to the traffic commissioner, which is the next step in the process. So this material that you have in front of you tonight is for your discussion and decision purposes, and the actual attachment to the resolution will be a slightly reformatted version of the material that you decide should represent the fines for parking violations going forward. Thank you.
What I'd like to do is hear if the subcommittee has anything, and then we have a speaker, and then we can open it up to council for their questions.
Okay. Whoever likes to. Okay. Go ahead, David.
Okay, I'll go first. Thank you. So first of all, I wanted to thank Councilmember Medina for working with me to make this a timely turnaround. I was concerned about dragging it out, and here we are at the very next meeting, and we were able to accomplish it, and want to thank staff for also going through and cleaning up our work and making sure that it was available to the rest of the council. When Marty and I met, we did take a lot of things into consideration. We brought up comments that were made at the previous meeting, and one of our concerns was to not penalize unfairly the residents in certain areas that are already impacted by parking, and trying to balance that with fines that carry some weight and might better influence behavior. We looked specifically at ones that we felt were safety issues, things that could impact safety in the neighborhoods, and looking carefully at those, we recommended that those go to the maximum amount. And across the board, as was noted, we increased the minimum, that was 40 across the board, 50 across the board, thinking that that was more impactful and sent a stronger message to people that were habitually abusing the system. So those are my comments. I'll let Marty chime in as well, and we're open to answer any questions.
Thank you, and thank you for meeting that Saturday. Basically, we took a spreadsheet that was given to us from staff, and sent over to Michael on Google Sheets, and we had the same spreadsheet, and he looked at it by himself, and I looked at it by myself, and then we met on Saturday, had a cup of coffee, and busted it out. Because it could work like that, you know, when you're motivated, and we were tasked to get it back quickly, and we did it. So there you go. That's an instance of where it does move a little quickly, but it's also some bad news, you know, for people that habitually are parking in the red zone. That's one of the areas that we increased to the maximum. It's red for a reason, so it's an expensive ticket. I commute, and I don't drive in the 400, is it $461 now if you're in the commuter lane? Wow. Well, why? Because it's $461. So the idea of increasing it from 38 to 40, a $2 increase to curb or prohibit behavior isn't really going to motivate people, so that's why we went to the 50. So one thing noted of the street sweeping, I propose not to increase that, and was able to convince Michael to kind of go along a little bit on it, and that's not as much of a safety thing, it's more or less people just forgetting, I would think. That's my experience. I think in, moved here in 2000, in 16 years, I think I got three tickets. And earlier on, it was just come out the door, and you forget that it was ticket day. And then fortunately, the council did bump out the hours of enforcement, so it wasn't so early in the morning. But I have a little bit of an issue of the fundamental fining one side of town. I don't know why, but I still have an issue with one side of town gets a fine and the other side doesn't. So that explains why I really pushed for not increasing that fine. Any questions?
So why don't we allow the speaker, and then?
Mr. Robert Rico.
I'm not sure who it is.
Robert Rico, 7th Avenue. I have a couple of questions that maybe the chief might want to answer a little bit. Under the code section 22500, which talks about blocking the driveway, can the resident still block his or her own driveway without getting a ticket if it's, I want to say, semi-legally parked there? In other words, not blocking the street and whatever? Because we were told earlier that it's a discretion of the officer a little bit, but if I park in front of my own driveway and I don't complain, why should I get a ticket? And secondly, relative to double parking, the 22500H double parking, what is the current process that the police department goes through on San Mateo Avenue to attempt to limit double parking? There are trucks that park from time to time to unload businesses. Some don't have a back-delivery entrance, so they can only bring it in through the front, and at times there are people in cars double parking, so I think maybe we need to, we, you, the council needs to understand a little bit what the process is. And the third item, as Councilmember Medina brought up on street cleaning, we were told relative to the Bel Air area is the city needs to keep non, keep crap out of the storm drains because it tends to plug things up. It's late at night, nobody's watching, and it causes overflows and flooding and whatever, so the Bel Air district is at the lower end, everything comes down. So part of the reason to do the street cleaning down there is to keep the stuff out of the storm drains, and if the street sweepers can't get in, especially in the winter season, we're not doing maybe all that we should. So I think potentially you need to consider raising a little bit the fine, not that I want to get caught on the street cleaning day, but I think there is some justification to do that to fulfill the desire of other requirements within the city. So thank you very much.
Thank you. So there were three questions, and why don't we see about Irene and Laura and Rico? If there's any questions? I did that on purpose. Irene?
Thank you. I appreciate the work you all did, but I don't agree with some of it. I agree with all the 40s that the staff had to 50s. I agree with Mr. Rico that street sweeping should be at 50, and maybe it's probably not easy to do, but we're going to, we're going to really have to look at our storm drain system and how we clean streets and how we do that whole thing very comprehensively very soon, and how we're going to finance all of that with the zero, oh no, it just slipped my brain, what it's called. Is Jimmy there? Jimmy, what's the new law? It's 2020, zero waste? Is that 2021? Oh, okay, a year. Zero waste into our storm drains. So the penalties for not doing that are very steep, and I believe, from what I've heard in other places, that the, excuse me, that the water board is going to be very, very strict about making sure that happens. So I'm with you, $50 for street sweeping should be there. I'm a little concerned about the bicycle on sidewalk. So you're saying if somebody leaves a bicycle on the sidewalk and it's blocking the sidewalk, you're going to charge them $75? Can't you just move the bicycle out of the sidewalk? That's, you know, and then the same with blocking a driveway. We block our driveway all the time because we want to let our neighbors have the street parking, so we block our own driveway and block our own cars. And then parking on the sidewalk, yes, it can be, it can be a safety issue in some areas because people have a hard time walking around it, but I know in other areas where the streets are narrow, people block part of the sidewalk because they're trying to keep their cars safe from being hit because the streets are narrow and there's cars parked all over. So I'd keep that at 52. So I don't know what you want to do with my comments, except there they are.
Okay, why don't we just go down the line and get and collect them? Laura?
It's funny, were you looking at my notes?
Never.
Because I asked the same comment about the bicycle and blocking, so $75, I was shocked about that one. I agree on the street sweeping, and we think we need to up that one. And I also have the same questions, Robert, great questions about parking in front of the driveway, double parking, what's the process? So can we get some answers first?
For me, I did it last time in my note here. You know, it has been since 2010 that these have been raised. We get 60% on some aspects, you get a straight fee on other fines, depending on which ones they are. I've noticed that everything is raised, for the most part, except abandonment vehicle on private property and street sweeping, and then of course, stuff as administrative fee, return check fee, collection fee. So to me, to say that the street sweeping, and yes, I'm affected, should not be raised in eight years when obviously I'm sure fees get raised over a period of time. You know, my last thing I suggested, even if it was 40, but something that also had some increase as the rest of the community is facing. I also had shared, I think we need to clarify too, we're talking about blocking the sidewalk or blocking the driveway. It's not meaning that persons can't get by, it just means that you're parked in front of your driveway, but there's still a complete access to get through, so just so we're on the same page. And then the bike one was another question I had. So with that, we also are asking about double parking and the blocking driveway, of course, and I don't know if staff or chief, you already look like you're ready to come up. We'd love to hear from you.
So what question can I address?
There was San Mateo Avenue on double parking, was the first?
So to answer the question, I guess the question is concerning enforcement action regarding double parking. Okay, is that the question from?
Yes.
It is the current, that is the question.
There is no concentrated or dedicated enforcement regarding double parking specifically. We know that it's a problem. The city is divided into three patrol beats. San Mateo Avenue is just one small portion of a much larger patrol area for a patrol officer, so there is no dedicated enforcement. We typically try to make sure that the street is clear, but we don't have officers looking for those violations, if that's what we're being asked. We just don't have the capacity to do that at this time.
Chief, can I follow up on this?
Absolutely.
So Chief, if, say for example, somebody were unloading a truck in front of a business, they were right in front of the business, and it was clear that they were supplying that business, is that something that officers generally would not consider as serious as if, say, somebody was just, had left their car there unattended in the middle of the street?
That's fair to say. Both would be addressed, should the officer enclose. Uh, both would be addressed, um, should the officer encounter it and, and not be running from one call to the other, or whether they were responding to a specific complaint regarding that ins- that particular instance.
Then the other one was in regards to blocking your own driveway with your vehicle.
So technically, it is in violation to block any driveway, including your own. However, I think I've actually answered this question many times regarding many parking issues in front of this council, and we've made it abundantly clear that we do not respond, or we do not proactively enforce blocking, um, the blocking of a driveway. We only respond on a complaint basis. Therefore, we, we assume that the homeowner will not, uh, complain on themselves or any of their cohabitants. So, uh, technically, while it is a violation of the law, we understand that people do park in front of their own driveways and we do not enforce that proactively. That's a strictly a complaint-based enforcement, um, approach on our behalf.
Okay, thank you, chief.
I, I, I would like to point out, I know that the bicycle on the sidewalk has been brought up a couple of times.
Yes.
Uh, that is actually a California vehicle code section and not a municipal code section. It does not mean it's against the law to park your bicycle on a sidewalk, it's against the law to ride your, your bicycle on a sidewalk. It just ended up in the code, um, in this section because it, uh, it's something that falls into, um, the municipal, um, code sections regarding enforcement. There are several code sections listed within the, the spreadsheet here that are actually California vehicle codes that are not technically parking violations, but other violations. So I wanted to clear that up. We're not going to fine people seventy-five dollars for parking their bicycle on the sidewalk.
Any questions of the chief, why is?
Yeah, one more question. So, chief, there have been some concerns raised about the, um, the bicycles, the, yeah, the Lime Bikes and the other competitors in the city and those bikes being abandoned in neighborhoods. So is there any, anything in the code that would allow you or allow us to impose a fee on those companies or the riders if they were to abandon a bicycle, uh, somewhere inappropriately?
I would defer to both code enforcement and the city attorney as far as, um, a remedy for that. Uh, from a vehicle code perspective or a penal code perspective, uh, we really don't have an option as far as taking any type of enforcement action. Um, you know, just like a, a child may leave their bike on the sidewalk and run into a market, um, we would take the same approach with any bicycle that's, that's left. And oftentimes, we don't have the, you know, we don't have a license plate to issue a citation to a bicycle. So it's a, it's a little bit of a, of a different animal, even though we know the, uh, the, uh, the vendor that's, that's doing it, it's more of a, um, uh, administrative function rather than is a, an enforcement function, and right now, um, is the way that we're dealing with it.
Okay, all right, thank you for that. Mark, did you want to have anything to say or?
Not prepared.
No, only, only to say that I think the distinction is, uh, on the one hand, what you have in front of you tonight is a fine schedule, and then on the other hand, uh, you have a question of regulation of business activity in the city. So those really are, are two different things and handled in, in two different ways. And I'm actually not become aware of, there, there was a flurry of Lime Bike activity for a while, but I'm, I, I just haven't become aware that there is any of that anymore at the, at the moment, so.
So, through the chair, it sounds like there's only a couple of items that we, instead of going through the entire thing, it just sounded like the bicycle sidewalk blocking, riding can maybe be dropped down to fifty dollars? And then we can increase the street cleaning to fifty? Were there any other changes that?
No, those are the, those are the three that I thought, I, on the street cleaning, I was thinking more forty, but that was just me, you know? Obviously, I want this to work, so, uh, thoughts from the subcommittee?
Through the chair, regarding the bicycles, uh, what are the thoughts on, um, and, and again, I, I, I wasn't as clear either that it referred to riding a bicycle on the sidewalk versus parking on it. So, um, being that that could be a safety concern, somebody riding a bicycle at maybe some high rate of speed on a sidewalk, it becomes a safety issue?
True, but most people who ride bicycles are probably going to be kids, so now we're fining kids a hun- to seventy-five dollars?
They drive up to twelve on the sidewalk. Is that right?
They don't start riding their bikes till twelve nowadays.
I think it's, well.
I don't know.
Okay, yeah, I don't, I don't want to be the guy finding kids.
It would be probably discretion, you know, you see a guy, a guy or a girl riding their bike with, you know, young, probably.
How about this, we go down and, and ask each other, so it's, we have fifty, we have seventy-five, we'll make a kind of like.
Good baby.
Yeah, I'll go along with the recommendation. I just wanted to make sure that.
Which one?
Yeah, fifty.
Marty?
Fifty-five.
Okay, I take care of that. I think the other one was in regards to blocking the driveway? Thoughts?
Well, that would be if, if somebody that is not living in the house, that.
Mike.
I'm so sorry. That would be the, the case where somebody that doesn't live in the house is actually blocking your driveway and they would get a hundred dollar ticket.
Well, yes, except technically, it could be any of them. If my neighbor across the street gets mad at me and I have my car in front of my driveway, he can call in and the police can come and give me a hundred dollar ticket.
No, I thought that's, the answer was, I'm sorry, chief.
Yeah, I think if somebody complains.
Oh, if somebody complains?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Doesn't have to be you.
I'm sorry, I think they're going back to, if somebody, I park in front of my driveway, somebody across the street calls, officer comes out, would my car get cited?
No, we, we run the license plate to make sure that it doesn't, as long as it's registered to your home, uh, that's the first thing we're going to do. I, I would like to point out too, that in addition to, um, a citation, uh, you're also subject, your car's also subject to be towed, which would, which would include you having to pay a, a, a release fee to the police department, uh, in the amount of eighty-five dollars and any tow or storage fees to the tow company. So if, if somebody's blocking your driveway prohibiting you from, from either, um, entering or leaving your garage or driveway area, uh, we do have the legal authority to tow your vehicle as well as to cite it. But we would check to see who the registered owner is and make sure it doesn't correspond with the address from where we're towing the car. That's assuming that you've kept your registration current with your address, of course.
Thank you.
My daughter lives in Monterey.
So thoughts on the fee for blocking?
I, I still think it should be fifty, but.
I hear fifty?
I'm in agreement.
Fifty?
It's somebody blocking somebody's driveway is a pretty rude thing to do. I think it's, the max is appropriate.
Which is what, a hundred?
Hundred bucks.
Michael?
Fifty on, on top of getting towed, potentially getting towed. I bet it could, it could get ugly.
Citation, yeah, and tow, you're going to.
For, for unity, okay.
You get it's going to cost you two hundred dollars if you borrow out of a tow.
You get it that day.
So what do you say, Michael? Yeah.
Okay, I'll go with fifty, I was going to say seventy-five, okay, fifty. So, we've got fifty, fifty. Um, now we're at street sweeping.
And I actually want to, one more, add one more, the parking on the sidewalk, the parking on the sidewalk, residents get thing for just actually parking, is that also on the?
Parking on the driveway, parking on their driveway, if their back end of their vehicle is parked on the sideways, sidewalk? And that's also kind of a.
And, and I, I, we, and, and you know, we looked at that also as a safety issue because we, we've heard from people with people in wheelchairs, uh, mothers with strollers or fathers with strollers, uh, people walking dogs that step out in the street, it, it could be an issue if enough of the sidewalk is blocked. I think if it's sticking out a little, nobody would complain, they would just go around. But we felt that that was a safety issue.
Okay.
So are we going to keep it where it's at?
Keep it where it's at.
With the recommendation, okay? And then the final thing is street sweeping, uh, it was, um, it's at thirty-eight?
Fifty.
I hear fifty?
Second.
Marty?
Can we go with staff's recommendation of forty?
That was the mayor's.
Whoa, 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 and, and the mayor.
I, I know how strongly Marty felt about this, so I'll, I'll go along with forty as well.
And I'll go forty. Okay, so we have, uh, forty on street sweeping, sidewalk is fifty, blocking driveway is fifty, um, and the parking on the sidewalk is fifty, I think, if I've got all that correct. City clerk? Okay. So with those changes and thank, and do, uh, in all sincerity, thank you to Marty and Michael for meeting quickly. It was a two-week turnaround time, staff had already provided us a lot of the, the information, but thank you very much for doing that. Is everything, go ahead. We don't want to go over this again. Mark, are we okay? City clerk, we're okay?
We're good.
Okay, so with those, uh, changes, as we've all concurred, um, our majority of us concurred on one, uh, can we get a, adopt the resolution? Anyone want to introduce the resolution?
I'll introduce the resolution.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye. Next item.
Item nine D, adopt resolutions authorizing the city manager to execute contract amendments for professional services for the completion of the Crestmore Glenview Neighborhood Reconstruction Project. Resolution approving a contract amendment with BKF Engineers for Civil Engineering Services for the Crestmore Reconstruction Project and increasing the contract, contract amount by sixty-eight thousand dollars. Resolution approving a contract amendment with HB Consulting Group for project management, contract administration, and contract inspection services for the Crestmore Reconstruction Project and increasing the contract amount by three hundred and two thousand five hundred dollars.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, uh, your staff report provides a fairly detailed, um, presentation on the items of work that remain for the Crestmore rebuild project, um, to be undertaken by the two contract amendments that we're here to talk to you about tonight. I wanted to give, uh, you an opportunity, however, via this presentation to get a bit of an update, not only about the work remaining and the cost of that work, but the schedule for that work and the, and just an overall status report about the, um, uh, many different projects that have been undertaken in the neighborhood. Now, as we see that the, um, project is finally coming to completion and we're looking forward to being completely done with rebuilding that very important neighborhood by the end of this calendar year, so I'll ask, uh, Harry Burrows, our project manager, to make a few comments.
Harry.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. So, um, I wanted to give a little bit of background, um, as Connie just mentioned, on some of the completed projects to date, as well as the projects that we currently have in construction. So this exhibit here shows the neighborhood. And, um, just, um, as an overview, the area in orange, um, where the mouth of the canyon is, that was the first project that was undertaken after the event. And that involved reconstruction of, of some major retaining walls and slope stability and, and erosion control in the canyon. Shortly thereafter, we undertook the project that's shown there in red. And we took the opportunity, unfortunately, there were no homes there, but it was an opportunity for us to replace a section of sewer line that was, um, undersized. So we replaced that when we had the opportunity. The next project was what we called the Phase One Water Improvements, that's, uh, at the top end of the, um, exhibit, and those, that's shown in blue. And again, this was an opportunity to, um, provide some redundancy in the water system by installing two pressure regulating stations that allow, um, the city to take water from a higher pressure zone and reduce that pressure and, um, give us redundancy in terms of fire flows, um, to neighborhoods that normally couldn't, um, um, use that water at those higher pressures. Then shortly thereafter, the, um, project in yellow was undertaken, and that was the Phase Two Utility Improvements. And this was in what we call the fire damaged area of the neighborhood. And that was a replacement of all of the underground utilities, storm, um, sewer and water lines within, um, those roadways. Then the next project that was undertaken was the, the Phase Two Utility Improvements, and that's shown in the light blue, and, I'm, I'm sorry, the Phase Three Utilities. Um, and, and that was essentially all of the underground utilities and the remainder of the neighborhood. So in addition to replacing all the existing water lines and sewer lines, we added a lot of additional storm drainage that, um, um, wasn't there. So when this neighborhood was, um, designed and built back in the late fifties, the technology for, um, stormwater wasn't what it is today. And so this entire neighborhood had less than ten catch basins to, um, collect stormwater. We had large, um, steep streets that, um, you know, several, um, you know, eight, eight hundred to a thousand feet of streets that were all flowing down to, um, one storm drain inlet. So we took the opportunity to extend, extend storm drainage up to those areas, um, with this project. Then we undertook the, um, Upper Sanitary Sewer Lateral Replacement Program. And that has resulted in the replacement either by city contract and/or, um, private individuals replacing their sewers and getting reimbursed by the city of, um, almost three hundred, um, actually three hundred and twenty-five, um, sanitary sewer laterals within the neighborhood, out of a total of three hundred and seventy-five. And that's in addition to the thirty-eight homes that, um, burned down, all of those laterals were replaced as well. And then, um, we embarked upon the Phase Four Street Improvement Project, that's one that's currently in construction now, as well as the, um, Earl Glenview Park. Um, and that's the replacement of the old Totlot Park on the two locations that are shown here on this exhibit. So jumping into the Phase Four Street Improvements Project, that project is about seventy-five percent complete currently. We're, um, in the process now of actually doing the final paving work. We just, um, the last week and a half, did, um, the road recycling, it's a process called cold-in-place recycling, I'll show you some photos here in a second, that drastically shortened the duration of the, the paving work in the neighborhood. Uh, the work that we've completed to date includes all of the underground utilities. If, um, some of the council members may remember that, um, at one point in time, we were considering doing some traffic calming measures, including bulbouts in the neighborhood. At the time, we undertook the Phase Three Improvement Project, we actually, um, extended storm drainage facilities anticipating those bulbouts, which we later, um, did not construct the bulbouts. So this last project had to do some remedial work to correct some of the locations of those underground pipes so that they would match the current improvements as opposed to the previously planned, um, um, bulbouts. Again, we replaced, um, the streetlight system, all-new sidewalks, curb and gutter, and, um, the recycled roadways I just, um, indicated. So we're completing the paving as we speak, we started yesterday. Um, we're going to be paving the asphalt, um, roadway through next Monday. So again, we'll have the whole neighborhood paved out within six days from, from the start of the paving operations. The next work after that is we'll come back and all the intersections in the neighborhood, we're going to do stamped and colored concrete, um, in a herringbone pattern that looks like, um, pavers, so that, um, it'll provide both a, a visual and aesthetic improvement in the neighborhood, as well as hopefully provide some traffic calming, um, as well. The last steps will be the signing and striping work, um, within the roadway, and then, then just some cleanup punch list items. Um, we've had a tremendous amount of, I shouldn't say tremendous, we've, we have significant amount of change orders in the project for a variety of different reasons, including, um, underground utilities that, um, were in different locations. For example, what the picture shown here on the right, we had to remove portions of the existing Line 132 that we'd previously filled with slurry, uh, because it was in conflict with, um, storm drainage facilities. We also, um, took the opportunity to put a new subdrain system within the roadway. A lot of the neighborhood up there has a tremendous amount of underground water, both, um, springs as well as just dormant water there. So, um, we took the opportunity to construct new, um, subdrain system to intercept that water, to help prolong the life of the, the new pavement structures. These photos quickly show the demolition of the sidewalk and the construction of the new sidewalk curb and gutter. Um, what's, what's interesting to note here is both in this photo and some of the subsequent photos, the diversity of, um, of the interface between the back of sidewalk and each individual home. Some locations, we had retaining walls, um, decorative walls, other locations, we had landscaping, we had decorative paving, pavers, and, and regular concrete. These photos show the, um, recycling work that was just completed last week. And what this process did was, instead of coming through the neighborhood and digging out the roadway down to a depth of a foot or so and coming in with new base rock, which would have involved a lot of time, a lot of trucks, a lot of disruption, this process goes through and essentially chews up the existing asphalt and base material, injects a, a new asphalt emulsion in it, and out of the back end produces a new roadway, um, that then we put our top wearing surface on, which is shown in the next photo. So this is, um, these photos are actually from yesterday, um, they show the freshly produced, um, asphalt on Clermont. So what I, just describing some of the interface between the back of walk, we've had a lot of, um, issues that we've. of issues that we've had to deal with during construction. Some related to the contractor's work and work that the contractor needs to come back and fix. Others, for example, this one, unforeseen condition, many of the driveways out there, when they were installed or reinstalled, they dowelled into the existing sidewalk with rebar. Our contractor, even though he saw cut there, when he went to remove it, not knowing that the rebar was there, the rebar, you know, spalled and chipped the existing concrete. So, you know, this is not an easy fix in this specific location because it's not plain concrete. So this is just an example of some of the issues throughout the neighborhood. Here are a few more. You can see some chips and spalling with some bricks and concrete driveways. This is just an illustration of some of the diversity, as I explained, diversity of the back of sidewalk location. So what's interesting about this project is, unlike most roadway projects, the back of sidewalk is where the private improvements we had to match. The existing sidewalk constructed 50, 60 years ago, over time, had settled and moved, and we couldn't build it back to its exact location because it didn't meet ADA, current ADA requirements. So we had to juggle the new slope of the sidewalk with the existing improvements, and in some locations, it resulted in what's shown here in the bottom right photo, which is you see a little bit of a lip behind these pavers where we had to keep the sidewalk grade the same for ADA purposes. So there's a lot of these instances where we're going to have to go back and have gone back and dealt with these grade issues at individual property interfaces. The Earl Glenview Park is also under construction. Here's some very recent photos. The project's coming along very nicely. You can see the project signs are up now. We're looking at substantial completion in early September of this year. Substantial completion is when the contractor thinks that he's done with the job. Then we go through with a punch list and actually have him go back and correct deficiencies that we see. So we're probably not looking at a real completion of the project until October, but it is moving along, you know, quite well. The remaining tasks, they're outlined in the staff report, but real quickly, obviously we need to complete the construction of these two projects. We also need to construct the, some improvements at the mouth of the canyon. And I'll jump ahead to this slide. What's envisioned there is, this is an older photo. It doesn't indicate all of the vegetation that is now mature in this area. Back multiple years ago, we talked about doing a replanting in the canyon, but talking with Arboris and talking with the Geotech, we don't really want to get on those slopes with equipment and with landscaping, and we don't want to introduce irrigation there. So what has occurred over time is what we'd hoped would occur, which is the natural vegetation has grown back there mostly. Currently, and since the event, we've had a chain link fence there to keep people out. What we envision is putting up a two-rail wooden fence that's shown here along the edge of the roadway with a gate to allow our sewer crews to get in, for there's a sewer manhole there along that gray area and that gravel road, and then do some streetscape trees that are shown just illustratively there. So that is the work that's planned at the mouth of the canyon. Instead of going out with a separate contract for that, we're actually talking with both our Phase 4 contractor, as well as our park contractor, to get costs for them to do that work, so we can consider doing a change order in those contracts for that work instead of going out for a separate bid to save time and hopefully money in doing that. We've got ongoing surface restoration reimbursements for the Upper Sanitary Sewer Lateral Program. A lot of residents have decided to, or had decided to, wait and do their driveway repairs until after we had gone through with our new sidewalks because they didn't want us to damage their new driveways with our work. So those have been trickling in and will continue to trickle in over the next, you know, four or five months as people get that work done. And then we have final project record drawings, as-built drawings, that need to be compiled for all the different phases of the work into one cohesive document. We also have a record of survey that needs to be filed. When we tear up the roads, we tear out a lot of the street monumentation. That monumentation has to be reset, and it's a requirement of the law for us to do a record of survey and file that with the county by a licensed surveyor. And then as we close out the project, there's a lot of archiving of all the records, not just the plans, but of all the things like design deviations and other documents, so that in the future, when someone asks, why did we do something, there is a file and a record that someone can go to and find things very easily. And then we're continuing to do ongoing coordination with the owners and residents through the rest of the construction and as we transition, you know, to the end of the project. I'm not sure if this is real legible, but this is the schedule as we currently envision it, and we're pretty much on schedule as far as the individual tasks that are shown on the upper portion of the schedule for the Phase 4 project. We're currently in the final surface paving there that's shown, actually, we're ahead of schedule on that. The green represents the recycled, which has been combined essentially now with the surface paving. So the next work after that will, as I described, will be the intersections and the final signing and striping, and then the remedial work that the contractor still has to do relative to some of the concrete and other issues that are out in the field. The park will be completed, as I said substantially there, in early September with the closeout, you know, hopefully being there by the first of October. And then we've got the ongoing reimbursements and the other work to complete the project. Real quickly, just a summary of the BKF contract amendment that's in your package. That's work that they have undertaken during construction and yet to be completed includes a significant amount of sidewalk and curb grade elevation review during construction. We had to do some minor changes in the roadway profile to correct some drainage issues, particularly up at the intersection of San Bruno Avenue and Glenview. There was a pounding, a historical pounding problem there that we have since corrected with this construction. We've also, I discussed the record drawings, peer review that they will do because they did some of the original surveying up in the neighborhood of the consultant that's doing the record of survey and assisting in the final project documentation and archiving. And then the work that we'll be doing will be the ongoing project management, construction contract administration, and project inspection as we complete the construction projects. We've also got to negotiate the final change orders and resolve some pending claims related to some of the concrete work. Ongoing review and processing of the sewer surface reimbursements, as I described, and coordination of the remaining work and the ongoing liaison role that we're performing up in the neighborhood as well. So with that, ends my presentation. I'll turn it back over to you, Connie.
So the recommendation tonight is to make amendments to the two existing contracts with BKF and with HB Consulting Group. Both of these contracts have been scrutinized to keep the dollar amount of the additional and final amendment to the very minimum possible. I think that Harry's done a good job in outlining both the complexity as well as the remaining work for this project, the schedule for the project, and I think we can all be glad that this is almost finally over. The project of this complexity and the scope in terms of both the area, as well as the amount, the numbers of different pieces of the project is not one that maybe in retrospect we would have undertaken, honestly, even in response to the devastating consequences of the 2010 fire. It has been our interest and our strenuous work effort for the last almost eight years, or I guess almost seven years, we didn't get started on the rebuild immediately. It has been our effort and the work of, under Harry's guidance, the work of his team and subconsultants to make this process go as efficiently and as comprehensively as possible to get all of the work that we aspire to done in the best possible manner, with the ultimate goal of making this a shining example neighborhood, not only of, an example of what new infrastructure can accomplish in terms of the longevity of a neighborhood, but also to demonstrate what this neighborhood and what this community is about from a perspective of recovery and resilience. So with that, we're recommending two contract amendments for BKF in the amount of, I believe it's 68?
Yes.
Sixty-eight thousand dollars.
Correct.
And for HB Consulting in the amount of 302,500. Again, these will be the final contract amendments, and we are very much looking forward to this project being done and tied up with contractors, consultants, and the like off of the site before the end of this year. Thank you.
Okay, let's go down the line if it's okay and just see if there's any questions. Mary?
I don't have any questions, but Harry, we're going to miss you.
Oh, comments, sorry.
It's been a long time, and I really appreciate all that you've done and all that your team has done. It is complicated, as Connie said, and I know some of the neighbors put some of their frustration and their anxiety on you, and you and your team handled it very well, so I appreciate that. And Connie, you were fabulous throughout the whole thing, from the very first moment that we called you and, or anyone called you and said, hey, did you know? And from that moment until now, we couldn't have done it without you and done it the way you did. Jim mentioned some of the things that maybe a lot of people aren't aware of, all the efforts you have undertaken with pipeline safety, not just in San Bruno, but in the state, but nationally. And I think we owe you, and the country owes you a debt of gratitude that way. And that's, I hope when we finally cut a ribbon someplace that we, that you're able to come and help us cut that ribbon. Thank you.
Laura?
As the newest council member, it's hard for me to give you a lot of feedback on this project and kind of the trials and tribulations. I will say that something of this magnitude, and one of the comments that was written in the report is that, you know, that every vendor we work with, you know, didn't do their part, didn't stand, didn't complete a job on time. I can't imagine how you must have gone through this process and the sleepless nights and the worries and the frustrations. So I commend you for that because this is, I mean, it was good to kind of get an overview of the whole, of everything that's happened, but it's, there's a lot, and it doesn't even touch the surface. So thank you for dedication, your work. I don't know, do we need to hire impermanently? Is that?
Well, you know, for the project management that we were talking about earlier.
Okay, okay, okay. Let's stick to this one. Anything else?
I did, so thank you.
Michael, anything?
Yes, so I have to say that I am disappointed that it's taken us this long to get to this point, and the city manager made similar comments. And we, when we undertook this, and I was part of the council that made some of the decisions early on to expand the scope and allow it to drag on, and it was to the detriment of the neighborhood, and it impacted the residents there for far too long. So I am thrilled to see that we are this close. There's plenty of blame to go around, both appear on the dais and to the people, you know, that, you know, were advising us and, you know, just our desire to do the right thing, and in some cases, possibly some bad decisions, but, you know, here we are. And I am very, very glad to know that we're close. The dollar amounts now are, they seem to be more contained, and I'm really hoping that we don't encounter any more surprises at this point. And I also want to thank Connie, all of your effort on this, Harry for your involvement throughout the years. It was, it was a difficult project, trying to rebuild this neighborhood with the neighborhood already on top of it. It's like changing a car tire with the car running. It really was difficult, and so I appreciate the complexity and everything that has been done to make sure that the residents are, that their needs are addressed. And I think, Harry, that you have done a good job with that, so thank you for that. The one question I had, I noticed that the park sign is up, and the Parks Commission had asked about the naming of the parks. Looks like that's already done for Earl Glenview, so I guess at this point, there's, it's probably too late to bring up, but, you know, the Earl Glenview sign is actually not at the corner of Earl and Glenview, it's up the street from there. I don't know where the decision came from, or there was any, ever any discussion about what the park name should be, and I think that that name was the name of the Tot Lot that was, that existed down the street before, and it just carried over.
That is correct, and that name and that sign and the lettering and what have you was developed as part of the construction plans. So I, the answer, the short answer is yes. The intent was to rebuild the park that previously existed, and that park was closer to the actual intersection of Earl and Glenview. But keeping that concept the same and replacing rather than making something totally different was the interest of the neighborhood. Go ahead.
Well, if I may, just to clarify, there's two elements of the park or two portions of the park. There is one that is still at Earl Glenview. I know it doesn't really address what you're speaking to, but, so we, so we do have an Earl Glenview portion of the park, and then we have the portion that's up at the intersection of Glenview and Clermont.
Okay. All right. So as long as the community accepted that as an appropriate?
Well, that is, that is my understanding, and I'm not aware that we've received. The sign has been up now for at least a few days, if not a week.
With no complaints.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you.
Mari?
Harry Burrows, I think I met you at the beginning of all this, right? Is that how it worked? Is that how it worked that long ago? Right?
It's been a long time.
It's been a long time. So I've got a couple of questions. Congratulations on getting the paving to where it is now. I wish I had got a chance to see that. I am interested in the financial analysis of doing it that way compared to doing it the old way and what we learned from that, and maybe how we can apply that. Maybe the scale isn't going to work out for us, you know, you need a larger area, but if you could provide at some point some financial analysis of what that linear foot, or I'm sorry, square foot, or however, however you could provide that, I think that would be helpful for us to go forward with our paving. So when, and if we can get back to your schedule there, because rarely does construction projects blaze through schedule like you successfully have done. The colored chart, right. So when we put this bid, the bid package together or this contract amendment, if final surface paving is going to be done by the end of this month, is the final concrete and stamp intersection is going to be moved up in August?
Yeah, so we've got about a three, contractor says it's between three and four weeks of cure period on that asphalt before they can come back and stamp it. So the process is actually heat it up and stamp it and color it. It's almost like a paint, but it actually absorbs down into the asphalt so that it doesn't wear, the color doesn't wear off. So yes, that, so that red, that red bar will slide a little bit to the left?
Almost a month.
Correct.
Okay. And so, my thinking there is, this amendment, that included the less inspection time that's going to be needed? Because if, if, I mean, it's amazing that you guys got that much work done, so if the work is done, then you don't need as much inspection.
Yeah, I mean, if, if we finish the project sooner, as far as the actual field work, then yes, the, the actual inspection time will be less.
Right. And so as, as, and, and I'm envious, because if that paving is completed in, by the end of July, and the only inspections that are occurring is the park construction.
Well, we've got the park construction, and, and as I indicated, we have some issues that we're still in discussion with the contractor with, relative to some of the concrete work, and we have produced conservatively ten punch lists on the concrete that we're still working through with the contractor. So, given the size of the site and the amount of work that it takes to, you know, inspect all of these locations.
Got it.
As well as over three hundred connections of curb-through drains with properties that still have to be resolved to the satisfaction of not only the property owners, but also contractually and financially with the contractor. We've got a lot of detail work that's still left. I wish it was a matter of just finishing out the paving and then we're done.
Okay.
Because it would make our collective lives a lot easier, but unfortunately, there's still a lot of time and effort, and that's represented in that last bar, that blue, that dark blue bar there.
On the closeout, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So, you mentioned the change orders. What range of costs are, are you anticipating?
So, I, I'm not sure if I pointed out on the earlier slide, but the project included a little over a million dollars worth of contingency, because we anticipated a lot of interface issues with the properties. Right now, the change orders that we have received to date from the contractor are in excess of half a million dollars.
Okay.
We are in the process of negotiating those with him. We've, we've gone through the first round on the first half of that, so about three hundred thousand of them, and, you know, we have, we're, we're in the process of trying to hone that number down, but again, that's part of that closeout. It, it's going to be a process. I am hopeful that, you know, overall, we're going to bring, well, I am very hopeful we're going to bring the project in much below the overall project contingency of, of a million dollars, so.
So the last, just want to make sure I understand the, the last sentence here in, in the fiscal impact of, that the remaining amount of money, the five point six million is in, is in, I'm a little worried about, is expected to just sufficient, is expected to be just sufficient to cover. You know, that just word, I mean, how, how much play do we, you know, we're talking about a hundred thousand, we're talking a half a million, about fifty thousand?
Yeah.
Today? Because it could change, because there's still a lot of things we've got to do, right?
Yeah. I, I, I wouldn't like to even hazard a guess today until I get through the final negotiations with the contractor on these change orders. And again, we're in paving right now.
Got it.
We, we, we're not done with the project, so I, I'd be happy to provide more clarity sixty days from now.
Okay.
So, if, if I might, I actually wrote that, so maybe I could tell you what I was thinking here, and, and that is the additional information that's in the fiscal impact. We actually do anticipate that the total project is going to come in, and, and what I mean by total project, is not just the construction, but the total end amount of the use of the fifty million dollars that was negotiated with PG&E for restitution, recovery, and response. We expect to come in just under fifty-one million dollars. We have approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that the city council wisely set aside that was a reimbursement to the general fund for full-time staff that was earmarked for any overage in the overall fifty-million-dollar trust fund budget. So, at this point, we are anticipating that it's going to be very, very tight at the, at those combined amounts, just, just under fifty-one million dollars.
Okay. Final question is, for those trees that are going to need to be planted, has, have you contacted Parks to see if they could put those trees in?
Well, we also have to run irrigation to those trees, because there's going to be, need to be an establishment period, so we, we have had discussions with, with Parks related to the design and the concept of it. We're, we're actually talking with the landscape architect for the park about the feasibility of running an irrigation line off the controller for the park down there for a temporary period of time, until those trees get established.
Okay. All right. Okay. All right. Thank you for answering the questions in presentation. Appreciate it. We have two separate resolutions. Any action by council?
I'll introduce the first resolution approving the contract amendment with BKF engineers.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
We have a second resolution.
I'll introduce the next resolution approving a contract amendment with HB Consulting Group.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Next item.
Item nine E, receive city council subcommittee report and adopt resolution approving city council policies related to council member communication and other activities.
Connie?
Aye. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, once again, I'm going to turn this conversation over to a subcommittee of the city council that was first appointed in late March, closely following the city council's goal-setting and priority planning workshop that was held on March twenty-first. The purpose of that subcommittee was to work with staff to develop some counts, some norms and protocols for city council member activities and communication to address the city council's interests, to establish a more clear and definitive protocol, if you were, if you will, for the working relationship of the new city council. You're more tenured now than, than, than at that time, but the intent was to move to a platform that many cities have used in the development of standards or procedures and protocols that define and provide an opportunity for new members to be oriented, as well as for the city council to articulate and maintain certain expectations regarding their interaction, your interaction, one with another, and as a policymaking body. What's in front of you tonight is work product, as I said, of the subcommittee that was appointed to do this, and it relies heavily on best practice examples from numerous other documents that we searched for from other cities that have addressed similar issues in the past. Staff's perspective here is that this is a living document, and you have the opportunity to add, expand by, by refining the topics, adding or subtracting topics as, as your needs may arise, and that you look at it that way as, as a means of representing the current interests and priorities of the city council going forward. So, you may wish to make changes, you may wish to add topics, or to take other action with respect to the document that's in front of you. It's here tonight for your discussion and consideration, and would return, following your direction, to the subcommittee for any action by the city council at a future date. With that, your two councilmembers, Vice Mayor Davis and Councilmember O'Connell may have some comments and can certainly answer questions.
Thank you for that update. So, I appreciate the opportunity to work with Councilmember O'Connor, as well as staff, to develop this document. I found it to be very beneficial for myself, and I actually learned a lot through the process. You know, what we do, how we do it, does have impact. You know, when you, we, we sit down, and we had numerous meetings, and we had a lot of discussions about certain things. You know, a simple response to social media, for example, I, I'm a resident in San Bruno, and I go and I voice an opinion about something, but that has consequences. What I do and what I say, and we really need to think about that. And so I hope that the council members get an opportunity to really review this and understand it, and, and maybe you haven't had that opportunity to do that, and we can, we can bring it back, but at least tonight, give us some direction. Is this the right direction? Is this what you want to see? Is there something that's missing from it? That would be helpful. But if you look at, you know, an important aspect that we added to this, this document was, call it the ten-minute rule, and, and, you know, anything that we ask of staff to do should be something sort of short and simple, that if I picked up the phone and I called Connie and said, "Hey Connie, can I get an analysis on X, Y, and Z?", and, you know, we as a council have given direction for staff to work on projects, what are our goals, what are our priorities, as well as everyday business. And she does that, but yet it's taken, you know, three hours of staff's time. Well, is that really right, and is that appropriate? So we said, "You know what? Let's stop that. Let's not do that. Let's put the inquiry out there. If it's something that can be easily attainable, and I can get the information back, great. If not, she'll simply advise, bring it up under council comments, where I can then ask the council, ask the question about a particular issue and say, 'Are we interested in going down this? Do we want to spend task staff time to investigate, to bring up this information?'" And, and maybe we don't. Maybe we need to look at, let's stay focused on what our goals are. We sit here and we have discussions, we talk about priorities, let's stick with the priorities. So I thought that was an important part of this, of the council norms. How we represent ourselves at, you know, in attendance at a, at a commission or a board. You know, I think it's important, too. I think we need to allow those commissioners to, to do their job and to work with staff, and for us as council members to sit here and get the annual reports from them, to get reports from staff, and to allow them to know that we exist, we're here, come to me, come to us with questions, but that it's not our place to be attending those meetings on a regular basis, that our, our place is really right here, and, and that we as council members are here. We also talked about, you know, when we voice an opinion about an issue, whether it's responding to a social media, responding to a resident, that, that there's a disclaimer that goes in that says, you know, "Here are my opinions that, that may not represent those of the San Bruno City Council as a whole." That's how I feel about that. And so those are some, some important things, too. And, and you can see with all the sort of headers of each of the particular areas, but I think that the document helped me in a lot of ways. It, it reconfirmed what I've, I think I've been hearing in the timeframe that I've been a council person, and I appreciated the feedback and the discussion, especially from Councilmember O'Connor, who's been doing this for a lot of years, and you get it, and, you know, a simple opinion about something in a public forum really can kind of shoot you in the, shoot you in the foot, and this is the place really for that, to voice our opinions about things, so.
Well, very well said. Thank you for that. It was a revelation to me in some ways, because when I started as a council, there was no next door. There was, the social, the emails that we got were very few and far between, and, you know, a lot of this stuff never came up, so it was a good review as well, and I would suggest since the hour is late and we've all been through a lot, that you take to heart what Laura said and do a good review of this, and we can bring it back at another council meeting, if you have any particular questions now, or if you want to dwell on it and bring it back.
Another, if I may, another point that I wanted to bring up is communication. I, I struggle with this all the time. You know, we get an email that goes to council. Who responds? Who takes leadership on that? How quickly should we respond to it? And so what we're, we're asking, and it really clearly states that, you know, the mayor or the city manager responds to the communication that goes to council, or that the mayor may assign a particular person to, council member to respond to that. Because I think that, you know, we're, like you said, we're in a time when, you know, email communication, we're, I mean, we're seeing a lot of communication. There's certain things that I won't respond to, and I don't think that are appropriate, but we all need to remember that I might get an individual email, but Marty, you're getting it, and, and Michael, you're getting it, and Rico, you're getting it, and we're all getting it, so we need to be careful about how we say and how we respond to that. So, sometimes maybe just checking in with each other, sharing that communication with the city manager, so the city manager's aware of that. But that's the kind of things that we wanted to address and, and to clarify as well.
Thank you. Marty or Michael, do you have any immediate questions, comments, or direction? Sure. Yeah, Marty, please.
Honestly, I, I got this at six o'clock in the morning, when I got up, right? So I can't really comment on it. It's, it's, it's very thorough. I briefly went through it. I had a really busy day. I agree that, you know, this is a good start, and that we can talk about it at, at a more, at a, at a different time, at a later time, but it's a great start, because this didn't exist.
Michael, anything with this time?
No, I, I agree that it is, it is a very good start. There's a lot of good content there, so thank you for doing the research and trying to arrive at some, a good base for us to operate from, so definitely appreciate it. I'm, I'm in favor of everything that's been outlined there. I started doing some other research on what other cities are doing. Some other cities are way ahead of us in terms of how they define it. When Laura and I were on Park and Rec, we actually went through the process of defining their bylaws and their, there was a couple of documents, I can't remember what the other document was, but it's definitely helpful as an exercise of going through and, and understanding what roles and responsibilities are and how things should be carried out. So, great job. Thank you for, for putting that together. I look forward to discussing it in more detail. I see that as being some, sort of a living document that, that could evolve as we, as we grow and as new technologies come about, and new ways to communicate with the public, and we'll definitely need to revisit it from time to time. Thank you for the work.
I want to keep it brief, but I think it's on track. I think it's a great start. It has changed over the years, but at the same time, too, it's good to have established expectations and that we all kind of streamline the process, even with our new city clerk. You know, we're looking to open up the emails so that she can see it, and we have response times and, and stuff like that, and it gets directed. So, I think it really helps set a, a standard and an expectation to our community and a responsiveness. So, I, we can bring this back, because I think Irene, you're right, because of lateness of the hour, but thank you very much for the meetings and the work. So we will bring that back at a future meeting. Okay. Comments from council members? Irene? Or, no, no. Any council member comments? Yes, please.
So, I, I wanted to make just a very, just a broad statement. I've, I've heard some dissatisfaction from members of the public in terms of our, our apparent lack of, it's, it's, it's a perceived lack of transparency in what we do, and part of it has to do with the fact that we can't just randomly respond to comments that are made online, and we can't engage with the public as, sometimes as freely as we would want to. But I did want to just reaffirm, I, I know, I believe it, and I, and those of you that I've worked with for years, I, I believe you all feel the same way, that we do respect the public's opinions, and we do make ourselves available to the public, and although we don't always respond on social media, it doesn't indicate in any way that we do not care about what our constituents feel. I think tonight was a great example of the community coming here to be heard in a very respectful, mutually respectful, and productive exchange of ideas and thoughts, and I believe that if this city is going to move forward, we need more of that kind of interaction with the public, engaging with their elected officials and with staff, and that really is the only way we're going to move forward, so. So, it is not helpful for people to try to put a wedge between us and the people that we serve because that is not going to help anyone. And so, I hope that we can see more constructive dialogue and progress on the issues that are important to all of us. I just wanted to say that. And to that, to that effect, there is one issue that's sitting out there that I would like to come back to because I do think it's important, and it touches on a lot of different things that are important to the community and important to the council, and that is having to do with a proposal around zoning for our transit corridor plan. That's something that we brought up, we discussed it in a study session, and I know that staff was going to go back and do some more work. I would like for us to get ahead of that before any more projects are proposed, before anything else goes down the pipe. I do want us to come to an agreement on whether we are going to change zoning, or whether we're going to adjust what's in that corridor plan. I do want to get some closure on that. So, as soon as staff could possibly bring something back for us to discuss again, whether it's another study session, if you feel that we need to be further educated, or something for us to vote on, I would definitely appreciate seeing that sooner rather than later.
Thank you.
I would like to concur with that to Councilmember Salazar, and maybe suggest a study session because it allows for the open dialogue and the communication versus a council meeting where we're going to get a report, residents get the two minutes. But it's becoming a hot item with new development and parking, and residents thinking that you could just say, "Oh, new development, and there's no public streets. You can't park in public streets." So, it really is part of an education process, as well as revisiting the zoning.
Okay. Anybody else? Marty?
So, let's open up that can of worms.
It's open.
It's open. And I agree, I, I'm on social media, I see it. It actually, when people say that the council doesn't care, you know, I think that's kind of a low blow, but some people decided to use those words. They're totally wrong. What the public needs to do is to understand the process. Going, when you, when you want to start a petition, you get your petition, you get your supporters, and you provide it to the council. Some people think it's the other way around. You, the, one of the petitions, they're asking the council to go ahead and, "Hey, are you going to support it?" It's like, you got it backwards. You're going to go out and get the people to sign, and then you bring that to the council. So, check with the city attorney, and there's some consequences. And city attorney, if I'm wrong, I'm probably not going to say it as eloquently as you, but the whole point is, you can't, you can't jump on a petition and say you support it regarding the development project because that shows bias, if, whether you're showing in favor of something or against something. And that could be, that could, that could be detrimental to the council later on. And I'm hoping that we can put that in writing and share that with social media so that it could be properly said, because I'm not going to, I'd have to read, and I don't want to do that right now. I also want to, I want to thank our city manager. Someone asked me a while ago, you know, "So, your city manager's leaving, and, you know, what are you going to say?" I started working here, I think in 2001. Can't remember now, it's such a long time ago. And I haven't always agreed with my city manager. I somehow disagree with a lot of people sometimes. But I try to work for the good of my city, of my department when I worked here, to see how things could be, get to, can be better, and that's why I'm on the council. And although I may disagree, I think, I know we agree that we want the best for our city. And I sincerely want you to know that I appreciate the hours of time that you spent with me, helping me understand what can be done and what cannot be done. And it was a little frustrating at first, but I look forward to our weekly Monday meetings of how, you know, I'm going to get some information, and how could, how could we work together to improve our city for everyone? And there's some difference of opinions. And as we saw tonight, you can do that still in a respectful way, but I want to sincerely thank you for that. I respect your effort, your years of service, and I wish you the very best in whatever it is that you choose to do. So, thank you.
Last comments from myself before we move into a moment of silence. So, you heard from two of the former mayors, and I've probably had the shortest time as mayor, but one thing that people have always asked, too, you know, it's a different seat, but does it, is it really different? The answer is yes. People think you have all this wielding power just to pick up the phone, and something will change, and policy will be made. But what I have known from my time as a city employee with city managers, and I've seen a few, and again, at my level, I wasn't working always that closely, but from Jerry Menford all the way through Connie Jackson, that goes back a long time. And so, what you do appreciate is that until you sometimes walk in the shoes, you don't understand the challenges that it faces, and that goes with any of the department heads. But what I do know is that there has always been the dedication, the devotion, the care, the concern, and the respect. I have gone through this counting for quite a bit, work-wise and not, and there is never a time that I've heard someone say, "Well, you know what I heard? That the city manager said to staff about council." Never. And Connie has and will, as we all know, work into the hours, because of the time we receive emails. But, you know, your devotion to the city is without question. And through this transition process, you are making it seamless and working very collaboratively with the new city manager-to-be, and I appreciate that because it's new for me, trying to work in a transitional period as a mayor. But you've made that very easy, and my ability to try to continue on for the betterment of San Bruno. So, I want to thank you, too, for your time and your effort, and your 15 years with this city through some challenging, real challenging times, and some good times. And I think we'll still be having good times for you to see coming forward when we finish that project at Glenview and Crestmore. So, thank you again. Thank you to my colleagues, because I think we all did, had a good night, and I appreciate all your efforts and all the subcommittees. And unfortunately, I am going to end in a moment of silence for someone, but well-deserved and respected. Alex Erwin Rolater passed away peacefully and asleep on July 16th. Alex proudly served his country in the United States Marine Corps, which, for, for which of you that knew Alex, he was extremely very proud of that service and extremely patriotic to this country. He began his law enforcement career with the city of San Bruno from 1999 to 2003, and then he went to work for the city of Daly City, where he had the rank of sergeant. One person who knew and worked with Alex said, quote, "I think that among the many things that could be said of Alex, the thing that always stuck with me about him as a cop was the fact that he garnered respect from every person that he came in contact with because he genuinely cared about them. Alex was respected by cops, crooks, and civilians alike because he cared for all of them," unquote. Alex loved many things in life, and his family meant everything to him. He loved having and making friends. He could make every, anyone feel loved through his humor, smile, hugs, and outgoing personality. He enjoyed nothing more than having a group of people over for a barbecue. He enjoyed sitting by his beloved pond, lighting his fire pit, and telling stories while watching the sunset in what he called God's Country. Alex claimed that no matter where he went in life, his heart would always be in San Bruno. For me personally, I've watched Alex grow up in this community. He went to school, played sports, and worked in San Bruno. He served in uniform, both for his nation and community, which not everyone can say they have done. Through this shock and seeing the community's support, and those that came back to celebrate his life, who grew up here in this city, Alex has reminded me that you do not have to look far in San Bruno to see the positive he found and why he loves this city. This is why he and his heart will always be a part of this community, known as a city with a heart. Our support, prayers, and thoughts are with the Rolater family. And if we can adjourn in a moment of silence, please. Thank you, and we'll adjourn to the next regular City Council meeting to be held here on August 28th at 7:00 PM at the San Bruno Senior Center. Thank you, and have a good night.